Bases have been installed.
Yes.
Wired up.
They're all wired up. They've just not turned on yet to National Grid.
Okay, did they come out and inspect the underground conduit at all?
Nobody said anything, you know, it's like anything.
Alright, what about the electrical inspector inspector?
No, they'll ask you to do it.
Okay, they're all back.
Yeah. Boom, put in, seeds on.
How can you expect that it's back though?
They can look in the handhold and look inside the bottom of the light.
Alright.
So the battle to get the one that hammered in. See, there's still struggle to get the light in that the intersection at the bottom. Everyone I've talked to says you have to talk to National Grid. National Grid sent me to New England Streetlights to get these things. That's who you deal with. And I've asked this lady, who do I talk to about putting that pole down? You know, putting one on the pole. I've talked to Joe with Stravsky.
Yeah, yes, correct.
About, you know, because he knows a guy with a boom truck and everything so we could install it. It's just a matter of getting an answer. Because that light's fairly easy to get. It should say screw it to the pole.
Oh yeah, and then it's a process through.
Yeah, and then you gotta.
Yeah.
Go through National Grid.
I just want to make sure you're going, that you've started.
I'm trying.
You know, yeah, we realize that, we didn't realize that National Grid is very tough to deal with. So.
We've waited eleven months and still. Yeah. And they're mowing the detention ponds now.
Okay.
And I'm gonna send Mike Andre a letter to give me what else he's expecting.
Art.
And, and I didn't find out where we are with the pond though.
Alright, Paulson, you checked out on any of the trees?
I did. There was like four or five that are dead at the beginning.
Yep.
Talked to Jeff Simon who put them in.
Correct.
He said some of them are still green at the bottom. But I said, take a good look at them. Whatever needs to be replaced, replace it.
Okay.
He's out of town this week, so.
Correct, alright.
And we'll get those done. Yeah.
Okay, close.
Yeah, and the engineers told me the last thing they got back from Mike Andre was they, they want to know where all the underground electrical is. That was all in before I started. So someone had to inspect it and have a map of what's down there. And I don't know if Mike Andre was here at that time, but I have no idea. You know, because all we had was our handhold collapses and transformers.
But you, I mean, you were able to find your electric to hook the lights up, so it's really not.
There's a handhold there.
It's really not an issue now.
Well, that's something that.
It was to make sure there was wiring for the lights.
Oh yeah.
Since you've been able to hook them up.
Yeah.
That's kind of a non-issue, yeah.
Okay, no, that's all done. But that's one of the things the engineer has, my engineer. And I said, who would find out from that? That was done, you know, eight years before I took it.
Right. Yeah, so that was just the conduits and the ones.
Yeah, I know, that's done.
That, that was a whole reason why Mike was concerned, just to make sure that there was wiring for most lights.
Yep.
Now they're installed, so.
What about, do you need to, do we need an as-built?
Yeah, I have to do the other items on Mike's list. You know, it's like, it's like the clean of the engine basins if they need to be increased. And if you're aware, there's these some concrete monuments, I mean, granite monuments, they have to be installed.
All the bounds are in.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all stuff I've done in the past year. I haven't asked for a bond reduction or anything in over a year.
Yep.
So all that stuff I paid out of the market, the trees, the bounds, all the engineering to do the as-built. It's all been submitted.
Okay, I just might have to ask Mike to take a look at it to make sure we're all on the same page, but we really need the as-built.
I think the engineer is very.
To who, Mike?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm not aware of that, right? He might have.
No, I know they did. Almost a year ago, they submitted it.
Oh, okay. The, the open space iron pins are into?
Excuse me?
The open space iron pins and.
Space iron. Yes, the pins have been in for years. And I'm assigned to come in, I'm gonna attach it right to the light pole that's right there in front of the trail. You want it to say trail or open space?
I didn't. Yeah, I don't know what was on the.
Alright, I guess. Let's see.
Where?
Yeah.
Supposed to be.
That's easy.
Any other questions from the board?
So I'm just looking through the, the estimate that Gray's put together on August 5th. This year.
Did I get a copy?
Can you give your?
No, wait, this is from the.
Remaining work as of August 5th? Okay, so I just want to look at it line by line and just to make sure where we're at. Is this the way to do it?
Then you check, see what, you know.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So maybe, we've got seeding and trees.
Yes.
Both are in, or in process?
Uh, the only ones that aren't in, well, they're all in, except for the people that said they didn't want them, that you guys said, no, that's fine.
Right.
Um, the ones I have to replace that have died.
No repairs?
There is none, it's perfect.
It's good, okay. Uh, slope granite edging, general repairs?
Done.
Keep cut berm, general repairs? Traffic signage stops?
Uh, no.
Um, streetlights and utility lighter are in but not tested. And that was not it. Uh, silt fence, HBLs, maintaining, minor.
Those are all done.
All taken out. Cut clear brush from storm basins that they're doing right now?
Yes.
Additional top course to raise elevation?
No.
Okay. On the sidewalk? Something about sidewalk, additional top course to raise elevation?
Something that I think Mike brought up, pass. That one was below the current or something like that.
Daddy's got to show.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and then the drainage, is the drainage all been taken care of?
Drainage, you know, working good.
Why, that seems to be part of the whole engine basin process to clean out in, in the storm basin.
Catch basin, gas oil trap, riprap, filter fabric, and clean catch basins. No, that's.
Sorry. It's like, yes, I'd rather meet him there, go over anything he wants.
Probably easiest.
Yeah.
There's very few things left.
Yes, the stop signs, that's probably the, I'll get those. Put in, this must be one at the end of Downey and one at the bottom.
Are any other questions from the board? Alright, either way, your general item is for the extension. For to expires on 9/15.
Yes, you have to range another.
With a motion to bring the extension for him and Wood subdivision.
How long?
One month? Be a year. Or to be for Randy, the extension.
Oh, well, it's, it's, it's got to the board up to a year, so.
Alright.
Because I guess.
A whole year.
The thing is, is. You have to. Yeah, because what, the next week, all of them.
You want you, we want it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna keep pushing, so.
Uh, what do you think about National Grid getting that? That's the thing that.
But it's a different division of National Grid.
Yeah.
New England Street.
Oh, it is, okay, so, alright, that's the.
And it's not like they have to install anything, do it, just like hooking up a service.
So is it like? Almost like the easement to attach something to their.
They, they opened a storm, the handhold, the wires are right there to get. Because we were gonna go to a transformers and the lady said, no, you have to go.
No, I'm talking about the street light down on Hammond Hill Road and that section down. That's one I'm, I'm thinking about the timeframe as far as.
Would the town accept that as a road prior to that being in?
I don't think. Ross said absolutely not.
That's not on the original plan, so.
It was in the subdivision regulations when this was approved.
Was it?
Yeah.
Section W Road.
I'd love to see that. No, I'm not trying to fight.
Caution, tease, dot your eyes.
You know, the goal is to get this approved.
Right, correct.
Do you want to get it off? You don't want to blow it for another year.
I don't need to see you.
So, you know.
And that's the thing I want, was the timeframe of that.
So the town meeting is what, 17th? November.
Are you, are you shooting for the fall town meeting?
I'd love to get it, you know, done and go.
It's. Excepted. Mr. Reed, a bit more up to National Grid at this.
As soon as I get it put in, and like I said, it's just, you know, you're dealing with National Grid, you call them, nobody answers.
Well, it's, um, the town meeting is November 13th? I think it's, it's in the team.
That's Monday, so. So if we extend this for two months?
To November 15th?
Yep. But then it should, we should.
As soon as I get it in, I'll let Randy know.
Yeah. The National Grid teams.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing holding my.
And that's what I.
As long as everything else is done by then.
Yep. Yeah.
Set to mercy.
Alright, we have a motion to extend this to 11:50, 2021.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, James. Thank you. We leave this one, I see on Mike's number, item number two, where one of the residents who put the shed in the drainage easement, there's nothing to do with you. Randy, if we could, just.
Is it that the one with the basin behind the house?
Correct, just to notify. And I don't know what the rest of.
It's been between six and seven.
Well, the town's gonna want to move because the town never has to get back to.
Yeah.
Work on that basis. Better to let them know now before.
I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I can understand them wanting to, I just make him know. It has been a solid easement. If the time comes where there's might be notices where you have to move it, you're gonna have to move it. Maintenance needs to be known, or something happens, just to let them know. Yeah, that's it.
I'll do that.
Because I don't want to take, go drop a hair on a homeowner for a shed.
This is the one across the street?
Uh, you know, with the, the very house you closed on, I think. No, not, no, the one before, before that, with the detention point in the background.
Okay.
That one, he put the shed in the easement, the drainage easement.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we just want to notify the home.
No, that's perfect.
Yeah, nothing to do with. Just want to.
You're aware in the future.
There's, there's a detention point of the street behind the house directly near the.
On Hammond Hill Road.
And they won't let us in the yard.
Oh yeah, we, I think, someone that was cleaning the basins had an issue with that, right?
The one across the street.
Yeah, so I think this is, it's a recorded easement, right? With by law, they have the right to cross over.
Yeah.
I know.
No, so how do I handle?
Are you gonna have to, uh, I hate to say, get the lawyer involved and have them. They may be aware, it's on their deed.
Right, no, I.
So they know, it's a, you have the legal right to maintain, for the soul, to maintain.
Okay.
That basin. That's all there is to it.
It came up before, the property owners were very, uh.
No, we tried to get away, they called everybody in town.
Yeah, sure, yeah, okay. Alright.
We're good?
Alright, yes.
Thank you guys.
Alright, next up, Public Care and Containment for Blue Waterway Development LLC, such an application, a special permit for proposed warehouse located at 50 Sturbridge Road, which is Route 20 and 0 Sturbridge Road. Route 169 to allow building height of greater than 36 feet, but no more than 110 feet, the business of the park is owned on a lot of 75 feet and more. I'll turn it over to the applicants council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we start, can you, whether Alicia is on Zoom or not?
Alicia is not.
Her name was there.
Sure.
Oh. I didn't see.
No, I. Alex is on.
Okay.
I, I do not see Alicia's name on.
Okay, which is, can, can, no, can I ask, if it's not, well, Randy, can, can you check your records, the August 11th? And see if she attended it too? I have her as absent in person, but.
She attended on September 11th.
Two meetings too?
Two meetings ago.
I'll have to go back.
Yeah, alright.
I mean, she's our alternate, regardless, but I mean, she's not a voting member, but I checked.
Alright, I think his point is that she will be a voting member on the special permit. That's also her neighbor. If she doesn't attend.
Yeah, I mean, for people that have misreadings. Jane, I had made sure they have.
Yeah.
Provided with a flash drive or whatever it is, so they can watch.
A way to check your records now, I think under the law, while she can be absent, or any member can be absent from one meeting. And certify that they've caught up, lack of better terms. It's under the statute of limits of one meeting. And before we proceed, they lose her ability to vote, I'd like to at least know that.
I couldn't verify that right now. Has any information here on Zoom, she's not in the office. So I have no way to verify that right now. Unless I went on my own computer and, well, it wouldn't be helped, the minutes wouldn't be there yet.
Can I take a moment just to confer with the clients, the other one proceeding here, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead. What was the date on that, August?
11th.
August 11th?
Jane's brother, I have an opportunity after minutes for that meeting, yeah, so.
Could she check back on her notes?
We should probably check back on her notes, probably she's on soon.
Oh.
I just sent her a text message to see if she did attend the August 11th. Do we want to, uh, design that my lot now, Randy, do you want to do the, uh, the Tuck-A-Fang one to sign as well?
Yeah, I actually want to jump up and sign them both, because we have the definitive subject paper, Tuck-A-Fang, which is multiple pages.
Yeah.
So if you want to first get this, uh. Mylar, four copies for the A and R for. I'm not a road.
Hold on, I'm gonna have to dial in. Hey, she's gonna dial in, Randy, alright?
What's that?
She's gonna dial in, Tuesday, August 11th.
She was at the meeting on.
Yeah, she's gonna dial in now, alright?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you want to grab, we're just taking up.
If you're. Your latest.
Likely.
I think it's just that top.
And four, back and forth?
Oh, oh, pretty soon. Not at all.
Dials in there. Randy, I will ping on your thing, on your laptop, Lawrence.
James Jones, she was here.
Yeah.
Love to the top one of us.
Perfect, oh. Even that. He's for Gene.
No, my lot is for a paper copy soon.
You mean the four paper copies soon?
Guys, you're all out of practice.
It's a lot of work. Ross, Candy.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'd like some candy.
Actually, there's some towns. It's a hard time, but, you know, we buy it, it's not even a town. So, so we were gonna get a chocolate fountain, you know.
Alright, I think she's trying to get in there, Randy.
Nope, yeah.
Do you need her to speak up and decide that she is present, just to, you guys record?
The minutes reflect that she was present by Zoom, that's all I.
Yeah, so Alicia's now, he's, okay, now she's on.
Hey, Alicia.
So Jane, we will verify it. She's on that, what, 7?
7:25.
7:25.
Right, sorry for the diversion. So, by our schedule that we established back July, we're gonna follow up on traffic this evening. The traffic analysis necessary for this project started with a report submitted by Vanessa Associates in June. There's been three subsequent correspondence between Vanessa Associates and the MDM. There's progress being made because the correspondence are getting shorter, which is always a good sign. There are some modifications that we want to talk about, some further information we have with regard to traffic that we want to bring you up to date on with an effort to try to address the problems or any of the issues that the board might have. You're obviously, you're a peer consultant on any other issues as he sees it. Within that effort, at least this evening, to bring the issue of traffic hopefully to a closure and be able to move on to other areas. So with that, your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll introduce our traffic consultant to be able to go through the report.
Go right ahead.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for your record, my name is Jeffrey Durk, I'm the managing partner with Vanessa Associates and we're the transportation consultants for the project. So, since the last meeting, and I think we had submitted our responses to the original peer review comment letter, and at the time, the peer reviewer had a chance to quickly. We look at them, but obviously with the short timeframe between receipt of the letter and the net, that meeting was not able to do a thorough review. That, that thorough review has since taken place and we received a letter dated to August 30th, which indicated that we've sufficiently or adequately responded to the comments that were raised in that review letter, and I think we, we discussed a lot of those items at the last hearing. I won't go into a lot of details on those, but I'd be happy to dig into any of the items in particular that the board may have some questions on, but really, your peer reviewer was making sure that the methodology was sound with regards to the analysis that was undertaken. And I think with specific regard to the project was really to make sure that we were analyzing peak design condition, peak design condition being the condition where the traffic from the project and the traffic on the roadways were both at their highest level, so that, you know, ultimately, as we're looking at mitigation and the town's looking at, you know, conditions related to the project, that it's really based on what's represented as kind of a worst-case analysis condition. And so, you know, the peer reviewer has taken a look at that and has confirmed that the analysis, the methodology is, is consistent with industry standards and it does in fact address the peak design condition with respect to a peak. Of the project and peak on the roadway occurring at the highest traffic volume level. And also the mitigation program for the project. One of the things that we were asked to look at was to demonstrate that is, you might recall, we're installing this known as adaptive traffic control technologies at these traffic signals along the Route 20 corridor, essentially all the way from Route 49 in Sturbridge, all the way to Route 31 in Charlton. So all of those intersections will be updated to include this modern traffic signal technology. And the, really, the intent of that is to address the, not only the peak flows relating to the warehouse at the site, but also the peak traffic volume conditions on Route 20, because we're very well aware of the fact of conditions on the turnpike affecting traffic flows on Route 20 and how that seasonality relates to that, those conditions. And so the, the traffic signal systems that we're installing is, is going to be more responsive and reactive to those conditions that will occur. And so we provided some analysis to demonstrate that with the project, and in fact, other development projects in the area, including the other warehouse project at 241 Sturbridge Road, that with the mitigation, we're proposing that the intersections will operate at an overall acceptable level, meaning that conditions will be hopefully improved over what's out there today and certainly hopefully an improvement over the peak flow conditions that are experienced along Route 20 during this seasonal increases that, that happen. A key part, of course, of the, the traffic report and the, and the, the mod, is, and the mitigation is this traffic monitoring program. And your consultant had asked us to expand the scope and the time periods that we're going to be monitoring, and we've agreed to do that. So the, the town is going to be getting basically a comprehensive profile of the traffic volumes, both employee traffic as well as truck traffic coming in and out of the site over a complete 24-hour period for a seven-day time period, so weekdays, weekends. So hopefully, what that's gonna show to the town is it's gonna show the ebbs and flows in traffic, but, you know, I think most importantly, everything that you've been hearing in terms of the impact of the project and the mitigation program is gonna be validated by us looking at the traffic volumes coming in and out of the site and how much of the traffic is going left or right. How much traffic is using Route 169, because with that being within the framework of what we presented in the traffic study and reviewed by your consultant, the mitigation should operate exactly as we've demonstrated in the traffic analysis. There's been a couple of things that have happened since the last meeting. One of the things is we continue to coordinate with Mast DOT as well as the town Charlton, as well as Sturbridge. So we have had some interim meetings really relating to a couple of items. So with Mast DOT, Mast DOT has basically affirmed the methodology of the tran, the transportation analysis we've submitted. And I think importantly, what your consultant was looking at, which is the trip generation calculations and that peak design condition. So Mast DOT has, similar to your consultant, has said that everything has been appropriate in terms of what we're doing for the analysis time periods. So, so that's one thing, and again, it really just bolsters your, your consultant's review that the means and methods that we've applied in conducting the analysis has also been approved by the Department of Transportation. The other thing, and we'll, we'll talk about this, we, in a couple slides forward, we did broach this subject about transit service to the site. So we did have a meeting on the 26th of August with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and the Worcester Regional Transit Authority. And the town administrator also was able to participate, and we do appreciate the fact that he was able to be a part of that meeting to make sure that, you know, transit service to the town, and not only to this site, but also to, you know, the, the ongoing development that's taking place, expressing the fact that that's very important to the town, that expansion of the transit service takes place. With specific regards to this site, the Transit Authority has expressed interest in providing service here. Basically, they said it's, it's a no-brainer, just given its location. It's not a significant deviation from their route, so they are looking at servicing this project. And we'll show you some of the things that we've done to ensure that that access and service to the site by the Transit Authority can be made. They also are committing to also extending service along Route 20 to the west to pick up the other warehouse development and then possibly going into Sturbridge as well. So it's an overall benefit for the region. And this site obviously is one that they view as kind of that low-hanging fruit, again, little diversion, but significant ridership potential. And so that's something that we're working with them to come up with the details and how that service would take place, but they do intend on providing service to the site as well as elsewhere along the Route 20 corridor itself. And again, we appreciate the town administrator taking the time to join us on that meeting. And lastly, we'll talk about some strategies for future pedestrian and bicycle accommodations along Route 20, both how we're developing it as a part of our project, really is a planning process, as well as what Mast DOT is looking for in the future. Next slide. So focusing on the transportation improvement strategy that we have for the project, and you can see here, it's basically focused into four buckets. The first is the physical improvements, so we've, we've talked a lot about this adaptive traffic. So we've we've talked a lot about this adaptive traffic control systems technology that's going to be installed at the five signalized intersections, our driveway, the 169 intersection, Stafford Street, Route 31, and then at Route 49 in Sturbridge. Also mentioned that the traffic signals that are proposed to be installed at the driveway to the warehouse of 241, as well as in Sturbridge is another signal proposed at the Sturbridge Travel Center. Those will also be equipped with this technology. So the idea really is that from Route 84 all the way to Route 31, this type of system will be in place. And again, the intent is to mitigate and meter the traffic, to improve the traffic flow along the corridor entirely. So that it basically it improves the full long Route 20 as well as the ability for residents to be able to get out of driveways and side streets as well, all the way between Route 31 and Route Interstate 84. So that's a it's a benefit that's going to be developed as a part of this project and then adopt adopted as a part of those other new signals that we put in place. One of the things that the town and the planning board asked for was whether these systems could be installed kind of as an early action item. We have committed to doing that and advancing that with Mast D O T. A lot of the improvements that we're planning specifically with regards to our driveway and the access on Route 20, that's going to take, you know, several months, probably better part of a year for the designing approval of those improvements. These other technologies are working with the existing traffic signals that are in place and enhancing them, replacing the controllers. Those things can be done as a much quicker. And so what we've committed to doing is kind of pulling those aside as a separate project and advancing those much earlier to hopefully get those in place well before we achieve a certificate of occupancy of the building. That will help with traffic flows relating to construction activities as well. So we do commit to advancing those kind of as an early action item. There's also significant safety improvements that we're undertaking. So there's four specific intersections. There's the two intersections in Charlton City that we're going to be doing. So it's Stafford Street, Route 31, and then also at the Route 20, Route 169 intersection. As you might have recalled, there were road safety audits conducted for all of those locations. So what we're doing is implementing items that were not completed as a part of the Treehouse Brewing Project we're going to be undertaking as a part of a part of this project. Some of those relate to what you had with your first hearing, which is installing lighting at those intersections because they are quite dark in the evening. And as we talk about enhancing pedestrian bicycle activity, dark intersections are certainly not conducive to pedestrian activity. So those are one of the things that will be undertaken as well as some physical improvements as well. But basically, you know, completing some of the items that were listed in those road safety audits. And then at the access to our project site, we have physical improvements at Route 20, as you recall, widening the road to provide a left turn lane heading westbound and a right turn lane heading eastbound will be undertaken. And then we have some modifications to Route 169, really within the paved area that exists there today to provide a left turn lane heading northbound to provide access to the site. The next bucket is the transportation demand management measures. No central piece of that is really getting the Worcester Regional Transit Authority to provide a service to the site. And we'll show what we're doing with respect to the design of the project to encourage that. We also have specific things that we're doing as a part of the management and operations of the site. So we have an onsite transportation coordinator. That coordinator will be responsible for coordinating carpooling and van pooling by employees. So they'll keep a list of employees and then match them up to have them ride share or van share or van pool to the project site. One of the significant parts of having people both use public transportation, but as well as the carpool, van pool, is an emergency ride home program. So that will be done as a part of the project. So if you're a part of a carpool, van pool, use public transportation coming to the project site and there's an emergency during the day that you need to get home for, the emergency ride home pro program basically provides you with a voucher for a taxi, Uber lift to be able to have you travel from work back to home or to school, wherever the emergency may be. That will be put in place again to encourage and remove a barrier for people that might want a car or van pool to the project site. The next bucket is construction traffic management. So these are really measures that we're going to take during the construction of the project. Importantly, to make sure that trucks stay on truck routes, that they are not traveling on local roads. And so they're really sticking to the major areas within the town and really focused on Route 20, Route 31, Route 84, those type of roads rather than traveling on local roadways. So those are things that we built in or will be built into the contracting documents as a part of the project. As well as again, encouraging car and van pooling by construction workers and really coordinating with the town, with Randy, with the building inspector, with Mast D O T to undertake construction related management to make sure that we're we're doing things in a safe manner, but also reducing the amount of construction related traffic that's associated with the project. And then lastly, and probably most importantly, is the traffic monitoring program. So both, you know, myself as the applicant's traffic consultant and your peer review consultant, you know, we're relying upon the analyses that I've undertaken, that your review consultant has has taken a look at and is, you know, kind of poked and prodded around the edges to make sure that the methodology is sound. But really what it comes down to is making sure that the amount of traffic that we generate and the way that that traffic uses the roadway, so the distribution is in line with our traffic projections. And so that's what the purpose of the traffic monitoring program is. It's really to demonstrate compliance with all of the information that I presented to you and that your peer reviewer has relied upon in making his recommendations to you with regard to the project. So it's a very robust traffic monitoring program and I touched upon a few of those elements. But we're basically measuring the volume of traffic at the driveways that are at the project site, the directional distribution and the type of traffic. So in separating employee traffic from truck traffic, and that's all going to be reported to the town and Mast D O T. And again, your consultant requested that we look at extended time periods for those for the traffic monitoring and we've agreed to do that as a part of the project. So you're going to receive even after the project is, you know, gone through and get has been constructed for a five year period on an annual basis, you're going to be receiving reports documenting the volume of traffic over a continuous period going in and out of this site ad nauseam. So it's really, you know, the intent of that is to show you that we're in compliance with everything that you've relied upon in your approval of the project. Next slide. But not just to go into a few of the items I touched upon. So in terms of the bus service of the site, so this slide shows the existing Worcester Regional Transit Authority, the Route 29 bus. And you can see, I mean, if you look in kind of to the left hand side of the slide where the number five is, so you can see the route there traveling down Route 20 and then down Route 169. So you can see it goes right by the site on Route 169 already. Next slide, Alex. Thank you. So what this slide, this is what we had presented to the Transit Authority. So what this shows is how we're envisioning that the route might be altered and, you know, as you might imagine, it's the bus would continue down Route 20 past the Route 169 intersection would use the traffic signal at our entrance and then would enter the project site. And then you see in the blow up illustration, there's a bus stop that's been integrated in the project site with a loop configuration so that the bus can come in and you can see it's not interacting with, as it enters, it's not interacting with the employee parking area. It's almost isolated, comes in, picks up or drops off at the bus stop, then would continue out and use the Route 169 driveway to make a right hand turn. So the important thing is use the signal for the left hand turn to come in, use the Route 169 intersection for a right turn exiting and then travel to the south bridge and continue on its route and then loop back around to come to the site. So then it would would make a left off of Route 169, but a lower volume roadway. And we do have a dedicated left turn lane there. With a specific regard to the bus stop, one of the things your consultant asked that we incorporated and we've agreed to do is put what's known as a transit screen. So if you've been in a downtown office building in Worcester or even at the at Union Station, you'll see these transit screens and the transit screens basically tell you, you know, what this current status is of the transportation services in the area. So what it would show is what the current status is of the Route 29 bus in this case. So you'd know, you know, is it is it running late? What does it do to arrive? The intent of that really is so that you can kind of plan if it's, you know, if it's snowing or raining outside and we have a transit screen, let's say in the lobby of the building, you can hang out in the lobby if it's cold or windy or rainy outside, knowing that the buses, it might be delayed or the time that it arrives. And then you can come out to the bus stop and wait there when it's about to arrive. It's also going to provide information on the trains, the MBTA trains at Union Station as well as the other bus lines. So the intent is really to provide a lot of information so that you as a transit rider can can kind of plan your trip. And you can do that from the project site as you're as you're leaving. Next slide, Alex. So now, so now we're going to, we want to talk about the sidewalk infrastructure in the area. So what what we've done here is we've shown where the existing sidewalks are and then we've, so that's to the right. As you can see, this is the Charlton City area and we've shown in blue the extent of the existing sidewalk. So between Route 31 and Stafford Road, you can see there's there's generally sidewalks on both sides. There are also crosswalks at those signals to cross. Then the sidewalk extends along the north side, basically from Stafford all the way down to the bridge that goes over Caddy Brook. You know, the state of repair or disrepair of that sidewalk, I think, is is in question in some areas. But there is a sidewalk that sidewalk that does extend down to the bridge. From the bridge heading westerly, there are no pedestrian accommodations. They basically just end at at the bridge. Go to the next slide, Alex. I think it shows that in a little bit more detail in terms of what we're doing. And so I know John Perry's on, I can talk about this and John can get into a little bit more detail if necessary. So what this plan is showing here is what we're proposing to do or will be doing along the frontage of our project. So one of the things I want to point out on this slide here is that the right of way that exists on the south side, so that the project side essentially of of Route 20 is pretty much, you know, within a few feet of the edge of the pavement that's out there today. So one of the reasons why there is the lane configuration that you see going into the Route 169 intersection, where you see kind of a lane drop at that area there is because the public right of way that exists as you travel from the site heading easterly gets, there's a pinch point. And so because of that, what you see for a kind of the built out road section that there is pretty much what fits within the available public right of way. And so I mentioned that because as you look at installing sidewalks is really an issue with regards to right of way and the need to acquire additional right of way to be able to construct a sidewalk in the area. What we're doing as a part of the project is along the frontage of our project is we're establishing sufficient right of way so that Mast D O T in the future will be able to install most likely a shared use path because that's what they're doing elsewhere on the corridor. And I'll show you some slides in a moment that show what they're what they're doing. But basically a combination pedestrian and bicycle path that's separated from Route 20 by a grass strip. And so we've established somewhere between, I think John's about a 15 foot strip thereabouts along the property.
Yes, exactly. We it's it's a big grass shoulder from the edge of the roadway, it'd be a five foot grass shoulder and then a 12 foot shared use path and then another small shoulder before our our grading and wall continues that that blue line along that kind of follows the curve of the road there is we will need to put in a a bit of length of retaining wall in order to accomplish that, which is what that shows.
So we're establishing an alignment along Route 20, along the frontage of the property that allows Mast D O T to come in and install a shared use path in this area that is consistent with what they're doing elsewhere along the corridor. So there'll be no need to, you know, reconstruct our driveway or do any modifications to what we're planning to construct as a part of the project. So it's basically what we would call it's sidewalk or shared use path ready is what's being established in this area here, which is important to Mast D O T. They would ask that we do that and we've laid out our site plan properly so that they're able to accomplish the construction of a shared use path in this area. You might question what the yellow coloring is on this slide. This is a and back to a comment and request of your peer review consultant, which is to show what the site lines are. So the site triangle, so if a vehicle is exiting a property, looking to the left or right, they need to have sufficient site distance for a vehicle that's traveling close to 60 miles an hour as they're approaching the intersection to be able to safely determine that they can exit the property itself. So the yellow is those site triangle areas. And as you look to the west of the driveway, it's it's a combination of that site triangle for someone who's exiting our driveway, but also for when the traffic signals installed and the light is red, there's a queue of cars that occurs on the red light. And if you're driving eastbound, so heading from Sturbridge towards Charlton City, you need to be able to see the back of that queue so that you don't come around a corner and all of a sudden have a standing line of cars right in front of you. So that's why you see it kind of bends in a curve heading to the west because that's also the sightline that you need to be able to see a queue of cars that are stopped at that traffic signal. And I only point that out because you can see the way that John has laid out the retaining wall and the grading. It's not only to provide for the shared use path, it's also to maintain those clear sightlines that your consultant had asked to make sure that we demonstrate that we can achieve that and do the regrading that's necessary to do that along our frontage. And that's also one of the things that John has incorporated in this plan as well. Next slide, Alex, please. So now just looking at the mast dot, kind of the future of Route 20. And again, this is probably consistent with what you've seen elsewhere. So this shows what the cross section in this area basically between Route 169 and heading westerly. When you get to where our driveway is, there'll be another lane for the left turn lane. But generally, it's a four lane cross section separated by a raised median, either a concrete barrier or you'll see in another slide, a guard rail depending on what the curvature of the road looks like. And then there's a sidewalk or a shared use path installed at least along one side of the roadway. There's not always going to be a sidewalk along both sides. It will depend upon the available right of way as well as environmental constraints. So we've shown here what it would look like with the sidewalk or shared use path along our side, so the south side of the roadway here. Next slide, Alex. So these are the sections, this is the the next segment of Route 20 that's going to be reconstructed by Mast D O T, which really stretches from Richardson Corner all the way down to Route 12 in Oxford. So that entire stretch, as you probably know, because I know Charlton's been very involved in the in the roadway improvements for this section, as well as the prior section that was done in Charlton. But this shows that cross section that they're planning to build there. So this is the section from Richardson Corner to Oxford Road. So you can see in this area here, they're providing the travel lanes with the median barrier. But I think what I wanted to point out is, you know, depending on the level of pedestrian activity, the right of way that's available, you know, they they endeavor to install sidewalks, which you can see here right now how there isn't really pedestrian destinations along this section, the right of ways fairly constrained. So what they're doing is providing an on road bicycle accommodation. And we have a shared use to basically a four foot shoulder, which is a minimum, absolute minimum accommodation, but no sidewalks. So that's that's what they're doing that section. Again, it's really deals with what what constraints and the type of abutting land use. A next slide. And so this is the section from Roots 56 to Route 12 in Oxford. And this is where you see, you see what they're doing sidewalk on one side. And then we use, see it says on the left side, you see it says eight foot S U P. So S U P is the shared use path. And so what you can see here is the four foot shoulder plus the eight foot shared use path. Basically what John has done with establishing that 15 foot cross section or the 15 foot setback from the edge of the travel way, that gives Mast D O T sufficient room to do the shoulder, widen shoulder, a shared use path, and then have a buffered area between the shoulder, the shared use path and the traveled way. So that's where the 15 feet came from that we're establishing along the property frontage. Next slide, Alex, or is that that might be the last one? I think I'm looking at slide 12 of 12. So I think that that concludes the slide presentation that we have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions now or after you hear from your review consultant.
Anyone from the board have any questions? The applicant's traffic consultant?
Jeff, thank you for the presentation. I was concerned about in the appendix, there's a the background development for future traffic. So background development, traffic, and it lists out several of the projects that would be considered for this. And then the the town of there's a list here from the town of Sturbridge that added a few more. So I was going to poke on that a little bit and just check my understanding. If I add up some of these numbers on the diagrams that are in here, like figure A 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, figure A 7, those are appear cumulative to what the project traffic will be. Like, how will I know that the future development? Like, how will I know that the future development have been considered in your plan?
I think, so first off, you're, I know your consultant had checked some of those. But what I would say is that almost there's probably with, with, with the, with a few exceptions, we, we were the consultant that prepared the traffic studies for all of those projects. So, you know, I at least know that that list that's there is comprehensive, because I know we work with Randy to come up with the list in Charlton to make sure that that was current as, and then the town of Sturbridge, it's the same thing. We've, those traffic studies for the projects that are listed in Sturbridge, we, we were the traffic engineer for all of those projects. And, and working with the town, with town of Sturbridge, with Gene, the planner.
Right. I think the only ones that were missing were the Treehouse Brewery expansion and auto storage facility at 299.
Yeah, and a lot of it from, we did the traffic counts, I mean, some were done. So we've done traffic counts in 2019, 2020, and 2021. So some of this, I would say the majority of this Treehouse Brewing counts, traffic volume should be in those numbers themselves. Because a lot of that that built out was, has taken place there.
Yeah, and I think that they may be pointing to the most recent expansion. So I'm not sure that was done in 2019. So there may be
And anything that was done after that was COVID.
Yeah, true, right. But I guess back to a, just a question of inclusion. Jeff, how do I, how do we know that the, the, you know, the development projects are considered? For example, in your peak hour traffic volume study, you know, that's shown on, it's called Figure 8 in your traffic study, page 28 or so.
I would say in your review consultants can correct me. One of the most painful things that we have to do in, is in reviewing projects is to add all the numbers up and, and make sure that, you know, they're, they're not off by a substantial amount. I mean, I think, you know, if, if there's a deviation by 10, maybe 20 vehicles, 20 is probably a little high. I mean, you know, generally we would say that's, that's fine. It's not something that's going to make a difference, especially as we look at project predicting into the future and adding growth rates and adjustment factors and things like that to it. So one, one of the rules of your consultant is to check to make sure that each of those numbers that you have, that what, what he does is basically reconstruct exactly what I did in the traffic study. So he starts with the base numbers, checks those, makes sure those are correct, adjusts those to the 2028 design condition, and then adds the numbers from every one of those figures, which again, it's, it's painful for us to do. But I mean, the point is your consultant, you know, I put those there, then your consultant checks all of those to make sure that all those numbers are included. And that was probably one of the baseline numbers, because baseline things that he does. Because if I'm off and those numbers aren't right, the first thing he's going to do is say, you gotta fix these, otherwise do the analysis. I'm just gonna have to do it again. So I know he's, he's undertaken that.
Just to weigh in on that, Randy, that is correct. Well, we don't look at every single turning movement for every single intersection. We select the most significant intersections and backcheck those against the submitted appendix materials. So we look at the cumulative total of background growth in specific projects and add those numbers to, to the baseline or existing conditions networks. Once those networks have been adjusted up to also include normalized area background growth, right? So there's, there's two levels of growth that are included in that assessment. One is a general background growth rate that is applied over a seven year time period. And then there are specific project related trips that are added on top of that. So the cumulative effect is reflected in what is called the no build traffic volume works in the report. And those were backchecked against the submitted appendix material to make sure that they were reasonably accounted for in the analysis, and that is in fact the case.
And so the, there's the no build and then there's the build traffic analysis. So the build traffic, the 2028 build analysis would include all of those other proposed development projects.
That's correct. Yes, so this is like layering a cake, if you will. You start with a known measured quantity of traffic, make appropriate seasonal and pandemic related adjustments, which have been done. Add to that the seven years of normalized background growth, plus the known permitted area projects to get to no build. And then you add yet another layer on top of that, which is the project related trips to, to land in what's called the build condition traffic volume network. So those future seven year horizon, future build networks account for all area of traffic growth from projects independent of the site as well as the project traffic for the site.
Okay. So the, the proposed warehouse at 241 Sturbridge Road, for example, shows traffic volumes estimated from that facility at 109 in the AM and like 120 in the, the PM hours, peak hours. For example, so those are added into the, the build condition in 2028. And I wonder where, so did you do the
Correct, so based on the individual project site trip distribution. I'm sorry, Randy. Could you repeat?
So the, the two, and this is Bill Fontaine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, sorry. Small, small screen, sorry.
I, I came up with like a, over a hundred traffic trips for the proposed warehouse at 241 Sturbridge for morning and evening peak hours. And so those would be included in the 2028 build scenario. And validated that, that's included.
That, that is correct. And, you know, we were the reviewer of record for that particular project as well. Been asked was the traffic engineer of record for that project. So those are included as background volumes, growth volumes in the no build analysis and the build analysis.
So what, what do we, how do you want to handle the two projects that have been referenced from the, the town of Sturbridge, the Treehouse Brewing expansion and there's the auto storage facility at 299 Sturbridge Road? That I didn't see in your listing of future development.
I, I believe that the, the known projects at the time we did our review included roughly about a dozen background projects, including those located in Sturbridge. And those were specifically identified by the town of Sturbridge and were referenced by the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, MEPA, in their review and Mast Dot's review of the, of the application material. So I, I don't have that material right in front of me. But I know that the projects that we did review is being referenced as background projects were appropriately accounted for. Whether that specifically accounted for the expansion of Treehouse, I can't be certain. You know, I recall that it did. And if you bear with me, I'll try to look that up. I will say that one of the reasons that there's what's known as a general background growth rate that's applied to projects like this is so that for smaller projects in particular, that the trips associated with smaller, but not specifically accounted for development are also reasonably represented in the traffic volume networks. So for smaller projects, projects that would generate less than 50 or 60 peak hour trips, for instance, the general area background growth factor accounts for those types of projects in the analysis.
Okay. Great, thank you. I guess that's it. Satisfied that if we go through and, and peel apart that 2028 build, that forensically we could track back to each of the other projects that are in the, the development, other, other development projects.
Yeah, to the extent it's helpful as well, the, the other warehouse project has, they have a traffic monitoring program as well. So the town, you're, you're going to get traffic volumes from that project. Same, similar to what we're doing here. The travel center of the town of Sturbridge, which is probably the next largest project, the, the same exact thing. So there's monitoring of those that's going to take place. And Randy can certainly request the monitoring for the travel center. The monitoring for the warehouse project at 241 will be provided directly to Randy. And I know Randy can contact Gene to get the monitoring for the travel center. So I think you're going to have three major projects in this corridor that you're going to have traffic monitoring volumes to prove out those numbers as well. So peeling it back, you're right, but you're also going to get in an annual basis for the next fires, be getting a lot of paper that's going to flow through Randy documenting traffic volumes and traffic flows from those projects.
And I guess in that evaluation, where's the, how many intersections would be documented in, in that evaluation? Like the after build evaluation?
So it's really what it does is it starts, it starts at the driveway. So the premise on those projects is that you start, the monitoring occurs at the driveway. And then if you are, if the volumes at the driveway are consistent with the traffic analysis, the trip projections and the distribution of traffic, and there's not, no crashes really happening at the driveway, then that basically, the monitoring stops there. Because it basically says you're in line with the estimates and the analyses that were done. And therefore, all of the mitigation that was associated with that is, was, is built to address those traffic volumes. So as long as you're within line with the projections, then it stops at the driveway. If you're, if you go over those estimates by more than 10%, then the monitoring program expands out to include additional intersections. With the idea being that you take it out as far as you need to, until the impact of the project stays in line with the projections. And that if you exceed the projections, then you are, you basically create an unmitigated impact that needs to be addressed.
Got it. That makes sense. And are you collecting this data from the coordinated traffic light system?
That's the data from the system actually goes to Mast D O T. They, you know, you know, Bob can correct me if I'm wrong. It's, it's essentially owned by Mast D O T. So they can release the data they collected, it's public information. But, but it would need to be something that would be provided from that, from them, because they own it once it's installed.
So where would you get your traffic monitoring values from?
And we would, just like we did as a part of the traffic study, we, we have measurements that are done by an independent sub consultant. We do not collect the data. We're basically hands off from that. So there's, there's a sub consultant that will be hired to go out there and conduct the traffic counts at the, at the driveways.
Right. And you can't, or so we, we can't, the town cannot monitor from the coordinated traffic signal system and get feeds to show trends off of that in all the directions from all of those traffic signals?
I think the town can request it from S D O T. Yep. Yeah, they, the data that will be collected by the traffic system can produce all of that on a, on a, on a, you know, 15 minute basis or five minute basis, it can provide that. The Department Mast D O T, the District Office in Worcester, they'll be the ones who, who have that data accessible to them. So they certainly can provide that information from the town. And, and in fact, if, you know, if there are issues in Charlton City or at any of those intersections, that's probably one of the first places, maybe, you know, Randy or the police chief can ask Mast D O T to provide the data. So then you can see if there's any anomalies that are taking place there.
Yeah, that would be a very rich source of data to just help and show trends, especially to the public. If, you know, there are questions or on the traffic, maybe you could
Well, it's only along the Route 24. That's, it doesn't affect any county road.
Yeah, so they want to collect that to key elements. Randy, it will, Randy, it will have data for each of the side streets as well, because the cameras are going to be pointing at the side streets, because it's collecting data. It needs to know how much traffic is arriving at the intersection on all the legs and then how much departs from the intersection. So it's a data rich type of system. So it's going to be collecting, so like at the Stafford Road intersection, it's going to collect Route 20 both directions, as well as which lanes there are traffics in, and only, so then the Stafford, departing volume of those side streets as well.
So it's for roads that intersect Route 20 only, correct?
No other That's correct, yeah. Yes.
Going all town roads, the impact.
But the ones that are considered probably in this plan.
Right, on the ones that connect to the state road.
Right, well, we could use your help, maybe Jeff, to get that data into our traffic monitoring program. Maybe we, if, if you could help us find a contact and request that we get access to that, you know, on a monthly basis to show trends on it.
Absolutely.
Into the program.
Absolutely, the, the system is very versatile in terms of providing that data. And there's, you know, there may be additional information that will be helpful to the town that, that can be
Yeah, you're, I'm assuming you, you said that we would be able to, to get some of that data. You were cutting out a little bit there, but have you seen
Sorry, yes.
And, and Mast D O T would be, it would be nice to share that data?
Yeah, I think it really, you know, that the request of the police chief, they certainly, or Randy, or the town administrator, they certainly would supply and provide the data to you. Again, it's, it's public information. The only time they typically would hold back is if there was something relating to a liability related issue at the intersection. You know, absent something like that, they, they readily provide the data. I mean, they provide it to us if we're doing traffic counts. We just, you know, have to file a public information request and we can get public released data.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just one, so you said this is an annual program for, for monitoring after, after the site build. Is this, is there something that might trigger an earlier review if, if there's a problem that, that pops? Or is this strictly on an annual basis?
Unless, so if there's, if there's an issue, we're going to be asked to be, do, do it sooner. So I think that, you know, if, if there's, if there's an issue out there that you see that might be related to the project that really, you know, Randy or the, the, the building enforcement officer, the chief building enforcement officer, would probably reach out and ask that something be done sooner. And it can also be requested through the Mast D O T office as well. So that, I mean, that's exactly what happened with Treehouse before, you know, before the improvements were done out there. That's how that process started, because there was no monitoring. And the way that processes, you're probably aware, it started with the town contacting Mast D O T and requesting that some monitoring and, and look back kind of at the conditions of recurring take place. So that's exactly the same way it would happen here. So if it's an intervening before any of the annual monitoring reports are provided, you know, that's, it's a similar approach that you take.
Thank you.
I might add, this is Bob Micho, that it would be beneficial to have the monitoring occur within some timeline of initial opening or occupancy. You wouldn't want to have a situation where you only begin monitoring after six or seven or, or eight months. Because if there were an issue that was, was being created prior to that, you'd want to have it rectified. So we would suggest that the initial monitoring take place within a, a certain period of time following initial site occupancy. And to the extent the occupancy is phased over time, the applicant would want to perhaps set an occupancy level of the building that would establish when that monitor, first monitoring report is conducted. And then at least annually thereafter, on a regular basis. The one point that we raised in our review had to do with the seasonal effect of the project as well. We're not aware that there would necessarily be a seasonal spike in employment. We're not aware that there would necessarily be a seasonal spike in employment or activity at the site, but to the extent that condition is created, you'd want to understand, or at least monitoring, monitor during that period as well. So for instance, if shipping activity spikes in November or December, and there's a sustained period of increased employment level or activity at the site, under that condition for an extended period during that period of time as well.
I try, John.
Just, just to your point, they just, Amazon just came out today on the news saying that they're looking for 125,000 seasonal employees. So typically UPS does, they do bulk up during the holiday seasons. So maybe that would be the idea to, to see have some. Getting back to Route 169 and I still know sidewalks at all coming down to the 169 intersection to bring people down into Charlton.
I think that, so the, I think part of the discussion you had, and it wasn't necessarily, I think, when I was participating more relating to the site plan, because I know you were talking about the acoustics and such. One of the issues, of course, with the driveways is meeting the Americans with the Disability Act compliance. And so as you saw, creating exercises, just how steep the driveway is. So that's, that's one of the reasons why the Worcester Regional Transit Authority connection is probably the most viable way for that connection to take place, because there are stops, you know, in the Charlton City area. So that, that probably because there are no sidewalks on Route 169 and Mastod is not posting install sidewalks on Route 169. But the Transit Authority connection is probably the most viable for pedestrian and they, those buses do accommodate bicycles as well.
So there's no plan for people to get out of that building, walk down the hill and walk into Charlton, Charlton District, Business District down in Charlton, as it's.
Yeah. Right now, there's no, there's no sidewalks for them to get to, even if we were to provide the sidewalks down the driveway, which again, for ADA compliance, it's quite steep. But there's just nothing for them to walk on at this point. And so really, that's why the bus service is the most viable. We are building the project to allow for sidewalks to be constructed along the frontage of the property. But at this point, until Mass DOT comes through, there's nothing for us to connect to. But there is really, that's why the push is really to get the public transportation in this area. And we really do think it's viable and the Transit Authority is also staff, you know, made their determination that, you know, this is something that would work for them.
Can you talk about the sensitive sensitivity analysis on 169, Jeff?
Yes.
The, I'm brought up with, and devil's advocate, if this, like, does not happen, I mean, is that your understanding that this, this project still could go on viable with having traffic coming up in and out?
Yeah, I mean, it.
Nine entrance.
Yeah. Yes, it's certainly the Route 169 entrance can accommodate the additional traffic flows. And that was one of the things, one of the reasons why your consultant had asked us to look at that. You know, the reality is, again, that the majority, almost exclusively, our trucks are going to be on Route 20 coming in. So the question really is if we had more employee traffic coming out that way, we could have increased truck activity. We're not planning that to take place. But I think a sensitivity analysis and the purpose of it is to say, can the 169 signal accommodate an increased traffic to me at that location? And then analysis was, it showed that it can, there'll be additional queuing. And I think one of the issues, as we all know, is really that de facto, we'll call it left turn lane on Route 169, I'm sorry, Route 20 westbound. As you're all familiar, if one vehicle's waiting to make a left and turn to head southbound on 169 in that lane, you know, then we start to have queuing happening on the approach. The signal operates fine. There's, the delays are limited, but there is, there will be extended queuing in that situation. And so we would need to look at, you know, how is that, what modifications may need to be made to the signal to accommodate those changes. But at this point, the way the site has been designed and the way we're advancing the project is a signalized intersection with Route 20. If for some reason that changes, then we would need to reevaluate that intersection and the access configuration. But, but there's nothing that suggests at this point that we're not going to be installing a signal at Route 20.
Bob, do you have any comment on that?
I think the nature of our comment in our second letter discussed that very issue. We think it's imperative to have a traffic signal on Route 20 to accommodate this project. I agree with Jeff that in the absence of having a traffic signal there, it would put a lot more pressure on, in particular, that left turn movement onto 169 southbound to a point where I think the queues would be rather extensive, frankly. I think the analysis shows that while the delays are manageable, level of service to your better operation, that the queues that result would be fairly significant and would really need to be dealt with as a, as a specific matter between the applicant and Mass DOT. My sense, in my experience, suggests that DOT, in their review of whether a signal is warranted on Route 20, whether or not it makes sense, is that they will conclude that it, in fact, is necessary and that it does meet the applicable warrants that would, would allow for its installation. Beyond the typical warrants that DOT looks for, which is really what's known as the eight hour traffic volume warrant, there are other factors that DOT will take into consideration when it's looking at the need for a traffic signal. Not the least of which is, in the absence of placing a signal, what secondary impacts might occur that would work against the, the public good. So in our review of the analysis, we think that, and we believe that DOT will see the same issue, that there really is an appropriate basis for warranting and allowing a signal at the front door. Because without it, it will most likely result in extensive queues at the signal 169 in particular, during certain hours of the day, earlier in the morning, you know, 6:30 to 7:30 in the morning in particular, when the highest level of inbound employee activity is projected to occur. And again, between 5:30 and 6:30 at night. You know, so we think it's imperative to get the signal. We, we think that based on the facts on the ground, the analysis, that DOT will ultimately conclude that that is the case. But it is certainly an issue that we've highlighted in our review as being important. You know, for that very reason, that that left turn lane, which does function today as a de facto left turn lane based on the volume that uses it, placing, you know, anywhere from 100 to 200 or more additional turns on that left, left lane will really make those queues skyrocket.
And I really think that back, you know, back to Bob's point, and you know, it's consistent with what my opinion is of it as well, is that this, this exercise really, we'll call it, it was to make sure that that intersection could function, wouldn't go into complete failure to the extent that that was to take place. But again, it, at this point is a, it's an exercise, hypothetical exercise, I think if you want to call it, you know, for what it is, but it's really to kind of, as I said, poke and prod and see what happens kind of thing. However, right now, we are proposing a signal at Route 20. Our analysis is based on that being the case. And that's what we believe Mass DOT will approve for a number of reasons. It's warranted. And then as Bob had mentioned, there's also a series of other criteria. From a practical perspective, I think as we've spoken about, you've got a couple of things. You've got, you know, the shift changes that we've been talking about, which is that you do have time periods when you've got a large number of vehicles that are all trying to exit at once. So we know how that works without a traffic signal. So that's a consideration. And then lastly, the trucks, the trucks and the speed of traffic on Route 20 are also another consideration. You know, in that the signal allows for all of those things to take place in a very safe manner that does not require backups or other unintended consequences along the Route 20 corridor. And so is your consultant had mentioned, I mean, those things weigh, weigh heavily as well. All those meaning warrants. So all of those conditions are kind of brought to bear at this location. So that, that's why, you know, I think we're both confident that that's the approach that's being taken. That's what the analysis is based on.
If I may, Jeff, also adds from an operational perspective, that the signal is a requirement for this facility as an operator, right? So I mean, this exercise is interesting hypothetically, but given that the warrant or the like is as of right, Master T wants it, Town wants it, the operator wants it, it's.
But has DOT said they want it?
Well, I mean, I think based on what we understand about typical analysis and what warrants a signal, we meet that criteria. It's how, I mean, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but would it be there if there was no signal?
Yeah, Mass, Mass DOT did not, they didn't take exception with the signal. What they did say, and similar to what your consultant had done with asking us to undertake this exercise, is that you know, we don't take install, they're, you know, the, the kind of summary of their comment was, we do not take installing new traffic signals lightly. And we really want to undertake a rigorous analysis and an alternatives analysis, which is similar to what your consultant has asked us to do, to show that this is really the best option. And so we've actually done that. And in fact, when we, you'll be getting a copy of our draft environmental impact report, we file that. And one of the items, which you'll see, and there is three concepts for that access, and all the robust alternatives analysis that even looked at putting a modern roundabout in, because they asked us to look at that as well. And again, it really goes, they want to look at all options, but they're not discounting the fact that the signal might be the, might be the best alternative. And that's the conclusion that we've all reached for a number of reasons. But they've asked us to really test these other approaches. And we've done that. And really, what it's coming back to is that the signal is really, it's warranted, is the safest and most viable alternative for this location on this roadway, given the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic, and the nature of this use, which has trucking activity, a significant number of trucks, as we talked about, related to it, plus the employee shifts. So as you start adding up all of these things, you can see that really meets the warrants and the nature of the use is such that a signal is really the only viable option to be able to accommodate the traffic in a safe manner entering and exiting the site. And I think, again, Mass DOT will reach the same conclusion, but we basically laid all of that out for them so that they can see this is fully justified.
I have no doubt in that. We all hope that happens. What we don't hope is that 169, you don't get the light. And you say, well, we'll go ahead and just go with 169 and readjust our plans. So that's.
No, we'd have to come back, we'd need to come back to you, because we have a plan that we're presenting to you that, you know, hopefully that you approve. That plan is contingent upon, you know, the traffic study, your peer reviews, comments, and the plans that are before you. And all of those reflect the signal at Route 20. So it would be a modification if that didn't happen and we weren't able to build the intersection out the way that we've proposed to do that. And everything we presented.
Do you know how many buses or the bus stops now in Charlton?
There is, I don't think there is.
There is one in front of Sunny's right there. And there's none in, I don't think there's none in.
I had a question about bus stop, because the ridership, what is the current ridership? That bus is behind this town hall empty often because they have no riders.
It doesn't stop down in the city at all.
No.
I thought you, that stopped in McDonald's.
We'll lift the traffic.
Well, that's why I had a question about the public transportation. Public transportation is usually bred to bring from suburbs to a higher concentration of population, or intercity population. A bus for bringing people to these facilities in Charlton is going to be going from suburb to suburb, picking up passengers. What are the odds that people are going to use, that's going to be used?
Well, you've got a large population in Worcester that, that would.
All the way from Worcester, I would be here.
If they would.
Typically, if you just from the search, search criteria, the demographic profile and labor goes, the radius is to about Worcester, and that's what makes this project viable, is the labor access. And that's typically a 15 to 20 mile radius with public transit. I understand, Jeff, Jeff, are you still there?
I have, yes.
Are you hearing some of the comments about the bus? I mean, I think part of the tenor of our conversation with the WRDA, it's kind of, I forget the economics. For us, the additional stops, right? I mean, I think we've described this as a little bit of a campus, right? That's, there's a major center, but here that will increase that demand.
It is. And they're, they're also hoping for additional ridership in Charlton and from some of the suburbs, just by the nature of the type of employment that will be offered at, at both warehouses, frankly. And that they see that that is a population that may not have, in some instances, may not have an automobile at all, or may have a limited access to automobile. So maybe, you know, it's a household where they really have only one automobile, but multiple persons working. You know, they view this as, that is a viable option for the type of employees that we're talking about here. And that it would be something that would increase their ridership and could potentially increase, you know, the stops elsewhere in Charlton, just by the nature of, you know, these employees riding the bus and then, you know, stopping off at Charlton City on their way to or from work for one reason. So they do see it as an opportunity.
How many route, how many times a day will they be making the route?
So one of the things, Randy, that they, that they, that I need to follow up with them is they've asked for the schedules, for the shift schedules for the two warehouse projects. So we're going to be providing that to them, because that's what they want to look at, is the starting time and the stopping time and the frequency. Because they want to make sure that it's matching up with the ships. So does they look at the time from leaving the transit hub in Worcester, their travel time to get to this site, they want to make sure it links up with the shift times at both warehouses so that they're able to accommodate ridership and then the.
Jeff, you cut out again.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Hear it out.
So they, the Transit Authority and the Regional Planning Commission have asked that I provide to them the shift times so that they can look at the times of arrival and departure of the buses in relation to those shift times to see if they, you know, see how the schedule is going to operate and then, and the headways between buses to make sure that it lines up with the shift times at both warehouse projects.
Makes sense.
All right. Angel, Angel. I didn't pronounce the name wrong, but our conservation director, she had a question about whether the proposed LNG plant Route 169, the monitor coming out there was taken into account in this traffic study.
Yep, it was. Yeah.
Yeah. 59 technical park drives at the Jeff, can you hear that question?
Yeah, if it was, so is it the, in Sturbridge and Pickeroe?
It's the proposed LNG plant on Route 169 in Charlton.
So I don't, that was not included in the. So I don't, that was not included in the traffic study. Is it, is it a delivery? So it's trucks delivering propane, liquid natural gas?
They're converting gas into liquid natural gas and then trucking it out of the facility. Because we have the Tennessee pipeline going through Charlton, so they're tapping into the pipeline.
So that was not included in.
Okay, that's, that was your question, whether it is included.
Yeah, was that, that was not included in the traffic study. If you, if there's information, if our study was prepared for that. I think both myself and your consultant can look at it to see if it, you know, really if it increases traffic that it would exceed the growth rate.
Yeah, it's all trucks. I think it was a small number of trucks, I guess. But it should probably be included. Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we were talking about kind of the, that layer, that layer cake that, yeah, the layer cake that your consultant was talking about, one of those layers is we just increased traffic, I believe, 1% per year for seven years. So if we just take the baseline numbers on Route 169 and then grow them 1% per year for seven years. So it's, it's likely that that growth rate incorporates the, you know, if there's a small number of trucks, it's likely that is incorporated in that growth rate.
Did we ever get a traffic study for that project?
No, DOT is supposed to be like 24 trucks a day. Twenty-four trips a day. A day, so.
During peak season.
Jeff, I think just, this is Alex, from what I understand, the LNG is under a different jurisdiction for. Right? Because it's an energy project at the state level, so I'm not sure how that data becomes available to us. But we could try to either directly request it from the facility or get it from the state.
Yeah, if it, if it was 23 trucks a day, that would be included in the growth rate and we would, we would. I think we actually, even if you gave us the numbers, we wouldn't include it separately because it's, the purpose of the growth rate is to account for small projects like that. So the 23 trucks a day would be included in the 1% growth rate.
I would, may I suggest that the growth rate, would it incorporate just increased population of that 1% and not include new projects? New projects should be an addendum to background growth rate. But I'm no traffic.
Yeah, I'll differ to your consultant. We, we typically, we don't. The, the purpose of the background projects is really to include large projects or projects that are in close proximity to the site. The growth rate is to take care of those smaller projects like, like that, that project. And, and you know, even if the town approves, you know, small subdivisions, five, 10 lots, that's in the growth rate. We don't include that separately and I'll let your consultant to opine.
Yeah, that's precisely the, the purpose of the general background growth rate. And we know that that growth rate does take into account the growth in traffic as a result of population increases as well. So as communities increase in population or employment centers grow in size over time, those growth trends are reflected in that growth rate along with any of the smaller development related projects like an LNG facility. And in fact, my firm has worked on a number of those types of LNG facilities in the Commonwealth. And they tend to be very low generators of traffic, but that, that, that's precisely what that 1% annualized growth rate is supposed to account for. Along with, as you point out correctly, normal growth in population and employment centers in and around the region.
Are there any other questions from the board? All right, Robert, do you have any, anything else to add as far as on your up here review end as to what Jeff?
No, the only, the only other thing that we had pointed out was the need for a vehicle turn analysis for each of the driveways to ensure that they were geometrically appropriate and able to accommodate the larger vehicles, the WB67 design vehicles in particular. And the applicant has, in fact, submitted that material, has made some changes to the driveway layout to ensure that those vehicle types could appropriately access and egress the property without encroaching on adjoining or opposing travel lanes. So that, that is now reflected, I believe, in the updated site plan set that was submitted by Langen. That was a checkbox item that we now can take off the list. And we did have a question relative to parking. The applicant has provided a parking accumulation analysis that would support why they're proposing the number of spaces that are shown on that site plan. We're satisfied that the information provided adequately addressed our concern. So at this point, I think we're, we're, through our review, the applicant has appropriately responded. And of course, I'll be at the disposal of the board to the extent any questions come up during the crafting of any specific conditions that might apply to transportation.
All right. Thank you, Robert. All right, are there any questions from the public? If you do have a question, please click the raise your hand on the Zoom and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Not seeing anyone.
All right, hearing none seen none. Maybe some of the people that are present.
Excuse me?
That all the people that are present.
Yes, exactly. I have total 15 participants right now.
We have a. All right. All right, do we have a motion to continue this? Does the applicant have anything else?
I don't know what you have on your list about architecture.
For the next meeting, but, but maybe it's, it's worth just taking a moment if I can ask the board to do that to kind of look at where we've been and where we need to go. Because we started this process back in July with looking at U sheds and the like. Spent now two and a half because part of our initial presentation traffic, looking at that. So we went through our last meeting, civil engineering, site design, stormwater and the like. There was an open issue from that discussion regarding interpretation of a provision of the zoning bylaw concerning parking in the front yard. Your record should reflect a letter from the building inspector to the planning board of September 9th. Agreeing that the prohibition that appears in one section of the bylaw, it looks like it applies to the BEP. In fact, doesn't because of another provision. In, in our review as to civil engineering, that was the only open issue. If the board thinks there's anything open, and, and when I say open, quite candidly, it's anything that would give a board member pause to vote no. As the civil engineering, is there anything left that you want us to provide to you or questions that you don't think we fully answered?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now either. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Great. So from this exercise in traffic, and there's certainly some words that need to go in a decision. So I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to get to that piece. But as far as further analysis, a better understanding, more data or anything else, does the board need anything further as we start looking at how to use our time together in the future?
I think we should have, as we normally do, something from Mass DOT. We have no information from them at all in writing saying they acknowledge a product. We have nothing. We typically get something from Mass DOT, you know, acknowledging the project that we're doing, not necessarily in the pool, but usually we have something.
Well, if, if it's not technically part of your record, I guess we can make it, but certainly the town has the correspondence of Mass DOT that went into the scoping session that went into ultimately the drafting of the draft EIR that Jeffrey Richards part of his presentation, which involves certainly some feedback as to what MassDOT was.
Yeah, I think what Randy is saying is we're getting all the information from MassDOT through you people. Is there any way we could be on the same email link or anything that?
I guess I, I opened it up to Jeff as to a reasonable expectation of what type of communication MassDOT could otherwise provide, given, given where it stands with MassDOT, which is it's an open project essentially with communication, but no results. Jeff, you have any thoughts as to what we might be able to?
We could, I mean, there's no reason that we can't loop Randy into the email exchanges and things that are going back and forth on, you know, affirming study area, methodology, things like that. Ultimately, MassDOT's comments will be a part of the official record through the MIPA process. So there, you know, as Mark had mentioned, we have their comment letter on the ENF that was filed. We're in the process of preparing the draft environmental impact report, which the town will get a copy of. And so you'll have that document and then Mass DOT's comments to that document. But I can also certainly loop Randy in on any communications we're having with them as we're preparing these documents. Because it's really all about affirming means, methods and what their expectations are in, in the draft environmental impact report and going forward. So there's certainly no reason Randy can't be a part of that, those email chains and share it with the board.
Oh, for 241 Sturbridge Road, for instance, that Mass DOT acknowledged, we're going to let you put in the light. We don't have that knowledge for this project and it's going to impact the traffic with that light.
Randy, we're actually in the same place with 241. 241 is going to be filing a final environmental impact report. And they've asked for the same alternatives analysis for the signal that is being requested here. So it's, it's actually, it's exactly the same. Both of the, so everything we've discussed on this project, 240 is undertaking the same analysis. We have a alternatives analysis for the driveway that looks at traffic signal, stop sign control and a modern roundabout. And that's going to be in the final environmental impact report, which the town will get a copy of as well. So it's, it's in the same stage.
Right, well, we, we had, like, I was part of the contact they provided it to me through GFI about what was happening with DOT on that project.
So I, I think as Jeff suggested, we, we can try to create a little bit of a summary to catch you up and then get you directly into the loop. I, I'd be surprised to hear that as part of 241, before getting through MIPA in any fashion, you got a letter from MassDOT that said, yes, it's going to be a light. It, it would have been probably aggravated Jeff is doing the alternative analysis that had already been decided. So I, I don't think we're going to get something as clear as that.
Final approval from them, we had their knowledge about the need for a light. Understood the reason for a need for a light at 241.
So we can get.
Because I mean, can't go until the lights approved anyway, so.
Yeah, or a letter from MassDOT or.
Yeah.
So.
So let, let, let's see what we can do to provide some information as to where it stands. You know that we're not just making stuff out of old cloth.
Yeah, great.
That's fair. We could see what we can do to satisfy that. Beyond that, as far as traffic or the analysis, anything missing?
I mean, I would suggest that the recommendation of, of our council, Mr. Rashad here, to commence the monitoring project sooner than six months after certificate of occupancy. And.
We've agreed to do that. I apologize for not mentioning that. That was one of the things that he asked and we, we agreed to do that.
And that's been updated in the, in the report in the traffic letter?
Yes, it's actually in our August 10th response to Mr. Michaud's comments and I'm trying to see if I can get the exact change. So it's in our, it's in our response letter and his comment is on page 10 of our letter and our response is on page 11. And specifically, he asked that, let me see if I can get the timing. Initiation of monitoring should be upon initial occupancy of the facility rather than six months. And we have agreed to do that.
So at, at the initial occupancy and then at six months and then every year after that, Mr. Dirk, is that?
So right now, we've agreed to start the monitoring at an initial occupancy. So we, to start our first measuring at initial occupancy, the next measure would be one year after initial occupancy. That's, that's the way it's structured right now.
For a total of five years, is that correct?
That's correct. And so initial occupancy and then it's going to go annually for a period after that for five, each year for five years.
Is that sound reasonable, Mr. Rashad? Is that what?
Yes, the, the only caveat I have to that is, again, if there are operating conditions that are specific seasonally that should be accounted for and monitored, that should really be a consideration. So I, I, I do not know whether or not that will be the case, but there may be special circumstances that would require supplemental monitoring to the extent that condition extended for any amount of time, meaning, you know, a month. So seasonally could mean increased employment activity and, and, and shipping activity, you know, during the Christmas season, the holiday season or sometime during the summer. And I know that for certain carriers that that is the case. I can't be certain that will be the case for the site, but the applicant should confirm whether or not there's a possibility that that condition might exist. And to the extent it does, it would probably make sense to do monitoring during that period of time. You know, to the extent, you know, that elevated amount of activity required even temporary measures to ensure appropriate traffic control, I think that would be the, the reason you'd want to monitor it.
So in, in light of that, could we recommend producing a monitoring report every six months for the first two years of the project and then annually?
Certainly, I think the, the value in doing multiple monitoring would, would be to capture again, the atypical or seasonal type characteristics. So if, depending on when this opens, you know, if it, if it opened during a high season, so to speak, in a period of time when there's an elevated amount of activity, that would capture what I'm talking about. And then a subsequent monitoring would get a so-called typical operating scenario. So I don't know that I would necessarily specify it as every six months. I would perhaps suggest that it capture initial occupancy to make sure that it's in general alignment with what the analysis and projection has shown. And subsequent during an elevated period of activity that might be associated with peak seasonal activity. So rather than specific number of months.
But yeah, and I'm just thinking, how do we, once we see the increased level of activity, you know, then that's when we want to have the report already completed. Not stop.
You want to measure that.
Yeah, you'd want to cap not, not initiate the monitoring after you see the peak of activity, but I.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the tenant should, should be able to define when those elevated periods of activity might occur based on its operational experience of other facilities it has nationally. So I, I, I believe that might warrant a discussion between the board and the tenant as to when that might occur so that you can reasonably anticipate when that monitoring might occur. Rather than, rather than dealing with it after the fact.
You know, I, I think it's something, Mr. Chairman, that we can, you know, work on a condition and then see what, you know, see how that works with. Or, you know, with the board, Randy, and with your consultant, to come up with something that, that makes sense and that captures what you're looking to have happen.
Yeah, probably the best time is like seasonal at the facility, you know, when you have increased, or in seasonal on 20, when you have the increased traffic, which is not driven by this, but it definitely is going to affect the track.
Yeah, and I would, I would think the report is actually a low lift effort if we have a lot of automated data being collected. It should just almost be a monitoring trend that we can look into on demand. So. It should just almost be a monitoring trend that we can look into on demand. So in more frequency, um, I, I would think it's just hard to try to request a uh, a traffic report after we've seen an increase in traffic. You know, I, I just don't think that scenario is gonna work.
I think Jeff's suggestion makes some sense. Let us put pen to paper and so we can try to take some of these concepts. Something we can read.
Yeah.
You can take a look at it.
Right.
Walk and look at it.
Right.
We'll see what we can.
Yeah, every six months, first two, two years, and then every year afterwards would be a, a starting point, I think, Jeff.
There will need to be something with the people, more than the fifteen people that show up to these meetings when the traffic hits the fan down there. We need to have something to tell them that, yes, we're gonna monitor it. That if this, we have a cure or some type of cure of adjusting the traffic lights or signals to try to get the move, of course, it's gonna be, everybody, once it's open, it's gonna be an issue because they're not gonna be used to the traffic that's on it. So just for the town's sake and for all involved, we need to have that memorialized somehow.
That's not dissimilar as to why Mastod requires it themselves. Yeah, so.
That, that's right. And that, that's a very good point. What, exactly what you've asked for is what Mastod has in their monitoring. It's not, it's not good enough just to submit paper saying, here's what the numbers are. There's also kind of a cause and effect. X kind of thing. So what you just described is what the triggers are. If this happens, then this is what is done. So that'll all be, we'll work out something.
If, if there isn't more analysis, then I think it's appropriate for us to start to turn, to start to draft some conditions that will document and memorialize commitments that Jeff has made through his presentation. Comments brought is made to deal with these future conditions. We didn't wanna start that obviously until we do, that we give you all the information you needed first. So if you have it, then we'll move on to that next level. That makes sense to the board.
Just here, so what standing does South Bridge or Sturbridge have in this traffic? What, do they have a, a right to appeal this project due to traffic or is there any hurdle that, any reach out, we need to do the, this, to these two towns to, to tell, of, of course, they know what's happening, but how to include them and so they're a successful partner in this.
The town is a body politic?
Yes, the town.
Oh, under, under the statute. Technically, the town acted through its Board of Selectmen. Could peel the decision of this board.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the statute. The reality is, is since March, we've been in communication with the Board of Selectmen. They're cognizant of it. We're dealing with a lot of details concerning other mitigations outside the realm of this. So that would come as a pretty big surprise if all of a sudden that were to arise.
They'll also receive our draft E I R submission, um, which will detail much of this, uh, including the improvements we're making in intersections in their town.
So both Sturbridge and South Bridge.
So I, I, we, we've been doing a fair amount of outreach in both communities to try to get the information out, get the right information out, get over some additional perceptions people may have. Um, and that's been going on before today and will continue tomorrow. We're open to that, to take advantage of the fact that public, if anybody has any concerns, that we published before, the website they can reach, that Alex's email. Please reach out. We'd rather give information than have somebody so concerned with us. So if that closes out traffic, the last thing I just wanted to bring up to date on that, I'll stop talking, is there was, as part of the acoustical um, uh, analysis that we provided last time, there was some issues that cross into the disciplines of traffic. We need to get some more information. We told you that Ben Mueller is, is drafting a memo with regard to those things. And we'll get that to you ahead of time. So you'll be able to digest that before the next meeting. We'll plan to have it present. Other than those issues, having had some time to think about it, are there any other areas of concern or areas of research or analysis that people want, board members want with regard to the acoustical study that was presented in some detail at the last meeting?
I think there was still an, an, an open item of exactly when the traffic that would be generated from the facility was going to be. Is that part of it?
It, the cross discipline of the traffic, there was questions about queuing hours of, uh, volume of trucks on one sixty-nine. Those we have, and that's, that's what he's working on.
Okay.
It's working on that, something that occurred to somebody.
I, I just remember from the discussions with the Latin, in reference to the properties on one sixty-nine that were near the, like, outside of the building, we call South Side, South East Side, about, you know, some sort of something protect those property owners on, on residential property zones to nine from noise. Uh, what they're doing, anything that are addressing that. What's that? They bought the one house.
Yeah, so that'll be involved with you.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying that, but you said, other right, so I just remember that being brought up.
Well, to, to refresh the board's recollection, we did as part of the analysis that, that Ben provided review based upon the, uh, projected increase in sound from the ambient conditions. Uh, not exactly on the properties of those neighbors, but the interesting part is the closer you get to their property, the closer you also get to that sixty-nine, which creates different noise. And, and I think we demonstrated that there wasn't gonna be an adverse impact. There was some discussions with one particular butter, one is an information Alex I know has reached out to that individual. We can assimilate all that and bring it back to you as to where we stand at the next meeting also.
Sure, I, I think the issue was wrong where you took the baseline and what the difference was. So the baseline at three o'clock in the morning is what difference the baseline at two o'clock in the afternoon. As far as sound goes.
Right, the, the engineer, I believe, is responding to that, um, just. Yeah, and as far as the, you know, standard engineering around that roadway, I think his initial analysis showed limited impact to those houses, but understanding that you had asked kind of a more specific question, I believe that's the response.
All right, okay, there was anything else from the board that had a concern about the acoustic?
Okay, we'll plan on acoustics architecture for the next meeting.
Um, I think while they're here, the board might want to, um, I have, I can't attend the October sixth meeting. So we gotta, you know, and speaking was lost and everything that we want to speaker and gates to October thirteen. The board would have to vote to, um, change the meeting day, but I don't, you know, get to them, you know, that.
So make a motion that we move our October sixth meeting to October thirteenth and our October twentieth meeting to October twenty-seventh.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, unanimous. Yes, we are. Yep, go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was trying to raise my hand before you made the motion. Uh, Conservation actually moved our meetings to the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, so we wouldn't conflict with yours, cuz we were getting a lot of pushback unity. But I kind of feel maybe, since there weren't a lot of comments tonight, that that might not be a problem going forward. I just wanted to throw that out there and I was trying to get it out there before you made the motion.
Alright, thanks, Angel, for the heads up.
Okay, so I'll revise the schedule again.
Yep.
Re-posted.
Yeah, alright, great, thanks, Alex. Alright, do we have a motion to continue this public hearing to October thirteenth at, um, seven o'clock soon? All those in favor?
Alright.
I, unanimous.
Thanks for your.
Thank you very much.
Thank you everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we got Property Solutions, Real Estate Contract, N L C, Game Hill World, Palm Drive, Boost My Stop, Special Park Field Modestation Discussion on the driveway.
That, that is being continued because I'm waiting for, um, comments from the fire department to satisfy. They changed it from a hammerhead turned around on the bubbles to a circle. And just trying to get his caution from the fire department that is satisfied with the way it's built.
Yep.
Before we approve the field change, so.
Are they still doing gravel instead of?
It's, it's milling, um, so it's, um.
Two different things.
Huh?
Yeah.
Be careful with that.
But that's what they usually pavement milling, so.
Pavement milling is the very top. It's the, the cream of the crop, which is very expensive. It's not the, well, pulverized stuff is, is the stuff that is piled up outside of, down.
Right.
Down off Larry's lane skate. That's a bigger, a milling is, is the first process where they take the, the top, the very top layer off. It's almost, and as they put it down, it almost, it will turn to.
It'll emulsify again.
Yeah, so just so they know.
Is that what they're using?
I, well, honestly, I have to verify that. Yeah, just so they might be.
Kurt Matthews said milling, but I know kind of you can use is.
Millings are like, it's not all the millings they reuse in pavement and they melt it again. So the millings are worth maybe forty dollars a ton. That other stuff is worth, it's a byproduct. It's worth about six dollars a ton.
So I would have to, uh, confirm that. Kurt Matthews said milling, but I would.
It'll be on that.
Yeah. This is, yeah, I mean, it was a big deal too for the fire.
I believe because I had to buy it at one time. It was.
Yeah. Also went to the property, so I can confirm with him too. He had to do a site visit. Property, so. Him also.
Alright, do we need to do a vote on that to continue it? Randy, or no?
No, I mean. Taking our actions.
Next up, we got a zoning bylaw diagnostic agreement with C L R P C Cons- Consultant B Trevor.
Welcome, Gabe.
Hi, everyone. Um, so, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't, I didn't realize I was up next. Um, let me pull up what I have today. So, um, Randy, did, were you able to send, did you get the documents I sent today?
I supplied all the board members with a copy of them, so they have to make.
Yeah, thank you.
Cool, so, um, for today, um, yeah, I guess it's up to, to you what you wanna prioritize. I sent Randy two documents. Um, the first first is this Charlton resiliency review that an intern of ours did earlier in the year and I didn't even realize we had it on file. But it's, um, you know, cuz I, I guess you have, um, from the Conservation Commission kind of wanna incorporate um, s- some sustainability practices potentially in the, uh, in the new bylaws. So I think, um, I think that's like a good start and maybe that should come later just because I, I, I just saw this for the first time today and I don't know what the, uh, what the M S R four, or MS four requirements are gonna be exactly. Um, but I think that'll, it's, it's an interesting document, um, but I didn't put it together, so I can't, uh, I can't speak to it in detail right now.
We got that, I can do and I can supply that to Angela and then she can review it with, you know, the Conservation Commission to see also within the M S R, M S four guidelines that we, that we need to comply with.
Okay.
I'm on the line, Angela, I'm online. Um, can I quickly talk, trying to accomplish with this?
Yeah.
Alright, so a year four requirement of the M S four is to audit our local ordinances and zone or bylaws and zoning bylaws. Make sure they don't attract green infrastructure and low impact development. So the EPA has a checklist. Um, I sent the one from the Center for Watershed Studies checklist.
Okay.
Commission also has a checklist. So like when you're going through this type of code review, you would use that checklist to identify barriers, um, to implementing green infrastructure techniques. And then we need to make a report of what those barriers are. There's nothing that says we necessarily have to implement them, but it might be hard to meet the T M D L requirements of the M S four without implementing some of them.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, what, yeah, what, what are those?
Is it, what is M S four stand for, Angela? You probably know faster than I do. I know.
You missed prepper, stormwater sewer systems. But it's, has other requirements that have to do with the Clean Water Act that deal with reducing your daily loads of pollutants like nitrogen, phosphorus, and area that mostly comes from suspended solids. So those are what we have to focus on in Charlton specifically, making pond phosphorus. Out of state nitrogen, which is like whole gym, and then suspended solid in rucks and ponds that have equilite parents. And we did that a lot with the stormwater bylaw by requiring phosphorus removal. So the requirement of that often leads to a lot of green infrastructure like rain gardens, bio swale, permeable pavers, perviable pavement, smaller or like subdivision streets with more vegetated buffers on the side, cheap types of plantings, all sorts of stuff. But there might be regulations that are restrictive to accomplishing those goals.
Hmm.
What the audit is.
Okay, and so who, who's conducting the audit? Are you?
I figured, yeah, it, it's the best time to hop on, cuz planning board is going through comprehensive sort of. So piggyback.
Yeah, I mean, often that Conservation Commission, Andrew will have to be on board that, you know, when plans that they're complying with these guidelines, so.
Now, is this for commercial development?
It's actually for any, depending on.
Doesn't necessarily, these are your regulation, planning board and zoning. So COMCOM has nothing to do with it. I'm sort of taking on the stormwater coordinator hat for the M S four perm. So it doesn't have that much to do with the actual so, uh, stormwater bylaw. It has more to do with your site plan review of subdivisions or solar fields or commercial stuff to make sure your requirements don't prohibit green infrastructure. Fully on you guys, your laws.
Alright, is that it?
Full subdivision. Maybe that would be looked at.
Exactly.
Not.
Yeah.
A law to.
I don't wanna see individual residential lots. I know neighborhood town that does it and it's always a tough. Yeah.
Roadways.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, sorry, Angela.
Yep.
Oh, I thought you were saying something, um.
So we'll, we'll give a copy of this thing and, um, that you provided to us. As you may not be aware, maybe you are, but I'm gonna give a copy, or a copy of that, so if you, we do it also. And we'll go from there, cuz I know it's gonna take a little time to put that together.
Yeah, so we can, I'm happy to, I mean, I'll be continuing talking to the planning boards.
Right, you can talk to Angela as well.
I'm happy to talk to Angela and help how I can. I'm happy to talk to Angela and help how I can within like the context.
Get, get a cooperate things into our bylaws, you know, then it probably be. It's a group effort that we're all on the same page, so.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, if the board wants to then just move on to the definitions we discussed last time and. Uh, all the new stuff that I've sent. Um, that I've sent Randy. So, um, it's not on the review definitions, but I was talking to Randy about this today. Um, I was looking into the question about massage parlors specifically, and I. I think it's something that might be more appropriate to be regulated through a specific Board of Health bylaw. Like a pack, like sort of a package of bylaws from the Board of Health, um. At most towns that have like, you know. Current modern massage regulation have a pretty extensive set of bylaws that are. You know, in the Board of Health section of their, of their bylaws, you don't really see it regular. They did through zoning definitions and like we discussed last time, there's kind of a lot of, there's a lot of gray areas that I think. Might be difficult to explain, like might be difficult to regulate through zoning or, you know, through the zoning bylaws. Um, you know, specifically you have, like, you know, you could have incidental massage happening, you know. In, you know, at a doctor's office, if you have, you know, physical therapy happening or. At some, at like an athletic facility, if you have sports massage. Um, and that they might not be technically licensed by the state massage board, but that would be. Valid and, you know, there's other stuff that could fall outside of that. So it's really a pretty complex issue and I don't, I think. I think it would be best to maybe try to see, see what the Board of Health thinks about this, that sort of thing and how they'd want to approach it because. It's, it's, it's a pretty complex issue and you could just say, you know, I think I, if, if, if the board wanted, I could put together a simple bylaw that. Sort of just says you have to be, have the state licensing and stuff, but I, I think that could create some problems and like there's a reason these towns have put together. You know, ten-page body works and massage bylaws with various categories and exemptions and definitions and stuff. It's a pretty. It's, it's a more complex than, than you might think. And, and, you know, we touched on that last time. So, um, with the definitions I sent, is there anywhere the board wants to start or should we just start from the beginning of the document? Go through them, because I, um, I, I believe this document basically covers everything we pulled, um, the last time I met with you. So.
I just start from the top and go through it quickly.
Okay, cool. So I'll start with the ones that we reviewed, um, and kind of basically workshop last time, but just to see if there's any other edits. Um, so we have racetrack. Um, and we kind of refined that to include motorized vehicle racing and then horse or dog racing. Um, and I felt like that was a, we got to a really good place of that one. Um, then we had this question of manufactured home versus mobile home versus recreational vehicle. Um, again, those definitions were from Worcester. I think they were, you guys were pretty satisfied with them. Um, you know, they're pretty dis, they're pretty distinct categories, but again, something that might, you're, you know, someone just. Flipping through the bylaws might not, might not know what those terms mean. And then, um, and if anyone wants to interrupt me or. Go for it, if, if you want to stop me. And then for yard sales, um, we discussed. Uh. You know, basically regulating. The timing of yard sales so that, you know, you can, you can only have three, like a three-day weekend yard sale every six months. Um, which would kind of allow people to do shorter yard sales, but you're not going to have, you know, an extended yard sale for, for over three days. But, you know, you could have regular ones happening that, you know, are being put away at the end of the weekend or something like that. Um. So then, uh, moving on to the new definitions. Um, I just put these in at the beginning. I think I got these from Angela, but. Um, these are just developed definitions of low impact development and green infrastructure. I think, um, we should table discussion of these just because I, I think like we discussed, this is kind of a complex. Um, you know, long-term discussion about the, uh, the, you know, how the bylaws interact with. Um, the conservation stuff, so unless anyone has any. Issues, I think we should move on to the, to the ones we addressed last time. So, um, starting off, um, last time we kind of discussed the distinction between agriculture. Um, and sort of marijuana cultivation. And so I pulled this pretty broad definition of agriculture that's from Mass General Law. Uh, chapter one twenty-eight, section one A. Um, again, you know, most, I actually was looking into this and. There's a few towns in the region that, you know, identify pretty strongly as agricultural communities, but in their definitions, they don't really have. Have a definition of, uh, of agriculture. Um, it's just sort of used in the, uh, in the use table. It'll usually say, you know, farming classified as agriculture, horticultural. And then sort of a, you know, different rules for livestock and acreage and that sort of thing. Um, so I don't know if it's really, if it's, you know, really necessary to have a definition of agriculture if you're defining marijuana cultivation. Um, but that is the definition from the state. Um, and so if. You know, it's a, it's a, it kind of covers all the ground that would, you could call a farm, including livestock, horses. Um, agriculture, floricultural, aquaculture, hori- horticulture. Um, forestry, so really just anything that would be a, you know, you could call a farm, like a tree farm or anything. Um, and then moving on. Onto the marijuana definitions, I pulled these from the Worcester adult use marijuana bylaws. Um, basically because, you know, Worcester does have these definitions for basically every sort of marijuana activity you'd see in the state. Um, that I'm not, you know, I don't know what, you know, if, if you don't want to allow these things, this is just to provide the definitions. I don't know what's, what's, what's desired. But I think it's useful to kind of have these definitions on file if, if it ever comes up. Um. So I think sort of the main, um, question. Was sort of what's the distinction between the different types of marijuana production? Um. And so I would look at, um, marijuana cultivator, I think, is a. Sort of a broad definition, so we have an entity licensed to cultivate, process and package marijuana. To deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments and to transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Including a craft marijuana cultivator cooperative. Um.
So in this context, where the word cultivation just means like processing? I mean, that. Probably also.
Yeah, so they have cultivation and then also marijuana product manufacturer. And I think that would be, because that's licensed to maintain, obtain manufacture, process and package marijuana. So that would be sort of the, the, the manufacturing side of it where you're turning the, the plant. And into edibles or, you know, extracts and that sort of thing. The cultivation would basically be farming it. Allowing them to process and package it, which, you know, and put it into, you know, containers, bags, whatever, and then allowing them to deliver it. So, yeah, that distinction with cultivator would basically be farming marijuana. Product manufacturer would be turning it into. Things besides the plant that, you know, edibles, tinctures, extracts, et cetera, that the consumer could buy at a, at a dispensary.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I see that and that's good, but I'm going back to. The agriculture one, I mean, this is, this is where the stumbling point was with BDP about. Under agriculture. If our zoning official was to read this and still say that marijuana falls under agriculture.
Well, where we have separate definitions for other, other parts of it, wouldn't it fall into that at that point? Anything that's not specifically under agriculture.
Well, well, that's. Is it even legal for do we? With the exception of marijuana.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, make sure that we legally can do that and then marijuana is not in it. That definitely should, they would go down to the cultivator.
Marijuana, okay, poppies.
Right.
Whatever else.
Comes up available.
I mean, if we just want to do anything today.
Except class one drugs or whatever, yeah, the definition of marijuana. I would say that, that would be, should there be no wiggle, so no one said, well, it's there, but it's not there.
Yeah, we need a separate definition that you supply that.
Somebody would prefer that.
Yeah, right, so that way there's no gray area.
Yeah, so I can, I can edit that to say like excluding. I can see how that's excluded in other towns. But again, a lot of towns, you know, don't necessarily have the agriculture definition to begin with. Um, and you would, you know, if you had marijuana cultivation, it would kind of be regulated as a separate category in the use table. Um, so I. Yeah, I don't, I don't, there's really a cons, I, I haven't heard that concern come up. Uh. Um, because I think once you define it as this is a marijuana, that would supersede the other classification. I mean, and in the same way, any sort of commerce, if you were regulating massage parlors differently from other professional offices. Uh, that would supersede, you know, a doctor's, like the general professional office, commercial retail definition. Um, so I, I wouldn't, I think it should be fine, but I can, I can do a little more digging and see. You know, how, you know, we can, if we can just say excluding marijuana cultivation, which is in a, you know, see that category.
This is not so bad to have extended definitions on all the types of marijuana uses retail, but.
I think that's great.
Yeah, because, you know, I'm, I'm not totally up on exactly what you can and can't prevent, but. You know, I've, I've worked in different towns and, you know. We, you know, I worked in a town and they had a dispensary that then expanded into processing and. You know, the town was okay with it, but it's definitely, a lot of these businesses are trying to. You know, there, it's still kind of a new industry, so a lot of the businesses are trying to figure out what the right model is for. You know, how to maintain their business in the long run, so I think all these things can, will, will probably come up. Um, if not in Charlton, in nearby towns in the future, so. Something to keep an eye on. Okay, um, so I can move on to the rest of the definitions if that's okay? So, um, going to the next page, um, we kind of discussed. The distinction between, um, industrial uses, so. Um, in the original definitions, you have light manufacturing and heavy industrial, which, you know, I thought was kind of a funny distinction, so. Industrial might be the more general term that might just sort of, because not all industrials is manufacturing. Um. But, yeah, um, for light. Light industrial, I have fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing, worker packaging. From previously prepared materials, the finished products or parts and incidental storage, sales and distribution of such products. But excluding basic industrial processing that produce no airborne emissions, objectionable noise, glare, odor, vibration, smoke or dust. Associated with the industrial operation. Uh, outdoor storage of raw materials and products is permitted with proper screening. And then for heavy industrial, the distinction would basically be that the uses have the potential to produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust and odor. And in, and in both cases, they're basically, it requires that outdoor storage has some sort of fencing or screening. Um, so like we've discussed, it's not just like on the front yard of, of a facility.
That's pretty good. I'm thinking about it from putting it into, you know, real world, using anything and actually calling. Think about a couple, like M T D micro mold, that would be considered light industrial. But then you have something like, uh. Heavy industrial. Well, I mean, actually, think about the L M P man. CR gonna produce waste nation, blah, 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 so. It's probably good to have the two definitions. What might be appropriate in one place might not be appropriate in another, you know. Yes, yeah, I mean, they're classic sample of that, yeah.
Can you repeat that about the truck traffic? Just would that be, would that sort of be included in this?
Yes, that's why we're talking about heavy industrial versus light and I think that's a good thing. And to give it, and you know, the, the, how you broke it down, I think is a. A good way of handling it as far as, you know, differentiating life. Ways done.
Yeah, because the real concern is impact on neighbors, not. Are you producing this doohickey or that doohickey?
Big point, Gabe, exactly.
Okay, um, and then you also wanted, um, a definition of hazardous waste. Um, and so it's kind of similar to the heavy industrial definition. Um. You know, basically may cause or significantly contribute, you know, any, any sort of waste. Um, that for whatever reason of its characteristics could cause. An increase in mortality or increase in serious irreversible or incapacitating reversible, reversible illness. Or pose a substantial present or potential hazard to human. And health, safety or welfare or to the environment when improperly treated, stored, transported, used or disposed of or otherwise managed. And, uh, you know, that, that's being pulled from the, from the Massachusetts code. Um, so I think, I, I, I think again, that kind of gets at the same thing with heavy industrial where the, the real issue is like the consequences of the, of the activity, not so much. Well, is it acid or? You know, biomedical waste or whatever. It's about, is it being, you know, you, is it being handled responsibly and, and, you know. Appropriate quantities, because you wouldn't want a doctor's office not to be able to like. You know, have their biomedical waste pickup box that's, you know, just on the front, on the front steps. But they can't have, you know, an overflowing dumpster.
Good.
Um, so then moving on, um. So we have the boarding hotel. Oh, question, um. And so we pulled this from LOL who uses boarding and lodging house in the same, uh, definition. And so we have a house where lodgings are let to four more persons, not within second degree of kindred to the person conducting it. And shall include fraternity houses and dormitories of educational institutions. But shall not include dormitories of charitable or philanthrop- philanthropic institutions or convalescent or nursing homes licensed under general law. Um, or rest homes so licensed or group residences licensed and regulated by agencies of the Commonwealth.
It sounds good.
Yeah, they are.
Should be combined.
And then you have lodging house, which is from Cambridge, um, which is a little simpler, a dwelling where lodgings are let to four more persons. Not within the second degree of kinship to the person conducting it, including fraternity housing, but not including dormitories. Um, or charitable, educational for, for philanthropic institutions, and obviously that's coming from Cambridge, so. Like their, their concern with dormitories is probably a lot more severe than in, than in Charlton, but, you know, they kind of include fraternities, but exclude dormitories. Um. You know, along with like convo, in that same category of like convalescent or nursing homes.
I kind of like the first one.
Um, so I think, I think either definition is fine. I, I don't, you know, okay. Yeah, it's a little more, it's a little more, uh, comprehensive.
There's nothing about, I'm just thinking about what we had. There's nothing about a kitchen or food service. Yeah, we had some. Yeah, it's just. Yeah, it's just lodging of four unrelated people.
Well, it's, I mean, down. Maybe not, say bed and breakfast, but yeah.
Yeah, so there, you know, and I think we can, we can, I can look into this more, but I guess the question. It would, so you, you would have like a boarding house. And then you could also have a bed and breakfast, which again is kind of this pretty specific type of, type of lodging where, you know, you know, I, I don't.
I think the bed and breakfast.
Not to explain it, but you know, you have, you have the food being served to guests, uh, but it's still like pretty, it's limited. Not to explain it, but you know, you have, you have the food being served to guests, uh, but it's still like pretty, it's limited in size. Um, and so, you know, um, in, it looks like in Wilmington, um. They basically um, have to be. Yeah, basically like in two definitions, we pulled our owner occupied. Which, you know, that, that's up to you, how to treat that, I mean. I actually, you know, I, I don't necessarily think of a bed and breakfast as having to be owner occupied. Um, but this could also, um, and I, I actually, I, I didn't have the chance to look into the Airbnb stuff, but. That could also, you know, play into the question of how to regulate Airbnbs. Is requiring owner occupancy, especially in a town like, you know, a town like Charlton, it might, it might make sense. But, you know, you do have a couple, a couple options.
I think that, you know, when I'm thinking of a B and B, I always. Haven't ever known one that's not owner occupied. Be one way to regulate.
But that would, that would omit Airbnbs then, and said something. Want to do, or do you want to regulate that separately? We're not regulating it all.
He might want to provide a.
Short term housing rental. Uh, and how is it different than a, well, B and B, there is some concept of food there. Being provided. B and B is a tough one.
Yeah, I don't know about around here, but I, I, a lot of towns along the coast of Connecticut, they have. Because, you know, people rent out their. House for the weekends in the summer.
Could you scare up something?
You cut out, sorry.
Be able to find a definition of an Airbnb, or how to differentiate that.
I can, I can find a definition, I think that's a useful sort of way to look at it, is, I, I didn't have the chance to look at it, but um. Yeah, I, I can, I can just see how that differentiates, I can find it, you know, see if I can find a town that sort of separates the Airbnb from the B and B. And has, you know, like you said, short term rental or something along those lines. Um, cuz I think, I think, like, I think the food being provided would be the key. To that, um, as well as sort of the, how to treat the owner occupied part of it, cuz. You know, I, I, the big concern with, with Airbnb is, you know, when you basically have people operating unlicensed hotels. Um, it's not, so, you know, the owner occupied aspect of it, I think could be critical. But, cuz you know, if someone's operating it and, you know, living there, it, that, they, it could be a B and B, but they're booking it through Airbnb, you know? So I think the owner occupied thing, clarifying that would be useful.
So on the next, next page, is that a continuation of renting rooms and boarding?
Yeah, yeah, so that's another definition from Northampton, um, which I think. Has a, it's, it's a little, I think it might be. You know, it could, with the, the classifying that the common entrance is required might be. Too specific or, or not, that's like, you know, kind of a. Uh, you know, dimensional requirement, but, um, I think. Yeah, I, I think, I think having without individual kitchen facilities and with an individual or shared bath toilet facility. And that it's all required, separate from those required for the single family dwellings, um, I think that. That could be a useful definition.
That, that one sounds like an Airbnb. Definition, it, it sounds like a B and B, B and B. Well, it's still owner occupied, right?
Somebody's renting out their main house, you know, it's Airbnb, still renting out your.
Whatever you want to call it, short term rental. And, and that's fine, as long as they're, you know, there's, there's less of an issue there if the, if the owner is occupied. Yeah, that's, that's their problem, and yeah, not necessarily the neighbors.
Well, I can, um, I'll, I'll take another look at those, and I can, I apologize for not pulling. You know, the Airbnb specific stuff, but I, I can, I can focus on those, um, and try to sort of refine those definitions. Um, so I think for, for you guys in both, in both the case of an Airbnb and a traditional bed and breakfast, you'd like it. You'd like to maintain owner occupancy, correct?
Does that necessarily mean the owner is there during the time of the rental?
But Airbnb is a little bit different, you know, I, I, it's good to have a separate definition for it, whether we want to manage it separately i- in the bylaw. That's, that's to be seen, you know, but to have a separate definition for that, I think is okay.
Yeah, okay, cool, so I'll, I'll refine these and get those back to you. And then, um, I also, in the same sort of broad category, um, we have a definition for hotel. Um, a building or group of buildings intended and designed for transient overnight or extended occupancy. Divided into separate units and having a common entrance or individual exterior entrances. And including an inn motel and motor inn, but not including a boarding house, lodging house or a rooming house. Um, so that basically is like, you know, if you aren't fulfilling these categories. You need to be going for a hotel, and you know, that's obviously, you can't, you might not want to have those in residential areas or something. I think, I, I feel like that's like a, that's broad enough that we're not, you know. Getting too nitty gritty about what, what defines a hotel and sort of setting that aside, and anything that doesn't fulfill that, you can kind of dump in that category. Anything that doesn't fulfill, you know, the boarding house, Airbnb, bed and breakfast cat definitions. Um, so then I pulled from Worcester, cuz, you know, as, as, is, is a happy, happy surprise that they. You know, we talked about group homes, daycare centers, adult daycare centers. And family daycares, they actually have definitions for all, all of those categories. Um, so for daycare center, um, it's like a pretty, a pretty broad definition. Adult daycare center, again, a, a pretty, a pretty part, broad definition. Um, I think the key distinction is sort of family daycare home, um, so it would be a private residence. For, for the children under seven years of age or under sixteen years of age with special needs. Um, and the number of children can't exceed six, um, including any children who live in the residence. So I think six, I, I think six is in line with the bylaw, with the current bylaws, correct? That, um, to, to sort of shift into a full daycare center, it would be over six children, so. Um, I think that's. That, I, I like that definition a lot, and then. Um, you have group residence, um, any home license authorized or operated by the Commonwealth for residential parents, provisions of per. Persons who are capable of self preservation, and then limited would be for persons who are not capable of self preservation, so that would be, you know, for adults with special needs. The other definition could be halfway home, you know, any, you know, anything more broadly speaking, so I think. I think that does kind of put them into really good categories, and I like that distinction between, you know, the limited group residence and the. Sort of broad group residence.
Yeah, I like that too.
Cuz that wasn't something I really considered, I just kind of was thinking group home, but, you know, that could be. Basically an adult daycare center where people are there overnight and living there. So then, um, I also pulled a few dining definitions, three of these are from Worcester, so they all kind of interact with each other. Um, and then one of them is from Brookline and is kind of a broad, uh, drive through definition, so, um. First you have food service establishment, which is basically anything. Where food or drink is prepared for sale or for service on the premises or elsewhere. Or where food is served or provided for the public with or without charge. Um, and then, so that, that could allow you to kind of. That definition could, could include like a church with a soup kitchen. But it could include basic, or it could include like a convenience store, so it, it's really a broad definition. Um, but I think it's useful to kind of have that, maybe for like board of health purposes or something. Um, and then the, the other key def- distinction would be, they have food service establishment, fast food slash drive through. Um, licensed food service establishment in which a substantial portion of the food is prepared in advance for the designated order. For consumption on or off the premises, which provides for food pickup by the public without the need to leave the car. Um, and so what's good about that, I think, is that would sort of exclude that, that case we were talking about where a lot of restaurants are now switching to pick up. Um, you have things like, like, you know. Pizza, pizza shops that traditionally are, like, don't have people eating there. You know, are doing all delivery or all pickup, or, you know, just have limited seating, so I think, I think that. Sort of, without the need to leave the car, I think is really where people get, get frustrated with drive throughs, because then you have traffic. Um, and people idling cars in their neighborhood, and then you have restaurants, um, which is kind of. A more refined version of that food service establishment, um, and that could include table or counter service. Um, but it has to be sort of a licensed establishment, but that would, you know, obviously exclude something like a church soup kitchen. Um, something like that. Um, and then, and then this definition from. Brookline is just another example, um. I think it's basically the same as fast food drive through, um, but it's basically any sort of use where you don't have to leave your car. That might be useful to have, um, again, I've worked in a town where they have a dispensary, um, that recently, like, you know. In their, in their site plan, did a big switch to having drive through service. Um, you know, basically because they wanted to maintain COVID safety and realized it could be a really good, you know, option and way to distinguish themselves, so. You know, I think, I think that drive in uses category, it's up to you guys if you, if you think that's like a concern, but again, it can't hurt to have that in there. Um, and, and maybe just regulate it the same as drive through. Cuz again, it doesn't necessarily matter what people are buying, but sort of if they have cars idling outside.
Only thing that I would touch on a little bit here, Gabe, is to differentiate a, a food truck. From a food service establishment. Like, cuz who licenses food trucks?
Yeah, like no food vendor, however.
Yeah, I mean, what, do you really want to stop the hot guy, hot guy from sending up a card to TBS or, you know, it's not. But it is, so they license them separately.
Well, they have to get licensed by the Board of Health, they have to get, get, um. Like a yearly permit. From the Board of Health, or special events if they came for like home, or home day. They have to get approved, you know, one time you say to get approved, so they're really governed by the Board.
And I guess just calling them out separately would allow us to enforce where they can and cannot locate. Right, in your driveway. So maybe, that, that might be useful to just call.
No, absolutely, yeah, I can, I can see how other towns, cuz you know, food trucks are obviously very trendy. I can see if other towns sort of created a definition and if that's how that's enforced through zoning.
Food house is all there.
And I think that definition is good, just take out the mobile vehicle. And make it a food service truck or something.
Yeah, no, for sure. Um, okay, and then, um, moving on, um, we pulled a few, um, animal definitions. The, the main, the one at the top, I think, is the one that my colleague kind of put together. Um, the key thing is basically, um. Commercial facility for keeping animals to be diagnosed and treated, in treatment or recovering from treatment in accord with normal veterinary practice. And then basically, it just says that they have to be licensed by the Board of Registration for Veterinary Medicine pursuant to mass general law. Um, and it, it excludes, um, educational institutions for veterinary science, but you know, you could include that as well. And then the, the other two are basically just examples of. How we, how we pulled that, and you know, inspiration if there's any edits.
First one, maybe just, I, I do like the boarding, short term boarding incidental to care or something.
I think that would make sense to include, yeah.
Disturbage, it is disturbage animal hospital, but they board, they have a boarding facility there also.
And it's just straight boarding.
Yeah, I think that would then like qualify as a kennel, so.
Do have a veterinary practice on the site too, so.
Then do you want to? It depends on how the board feels about that.
Define though, don't we?
Oh, we have, I mean, yeah, kennels are defined.
Put a law in the same areas, but you may not have to, so we've got two definitions. So, but then you just prevent the hospital from opening up another revenue stream of a kennel. Unless it's allowed in that district. It just allows you to. It allows you to pull them apart.
Cuz I guess it's true, some places it might be appropriate someplace.
I think that makes sense. So then moving on, um. We pulled a definition for auto auction, um, where basically they have to be licensed by the Department of Consumer Affairs. Um, and registered as a vendor by the Department of Revenue, and what my colleague noted, um. Is, uh, there's not really a local permit process for auto auctioning. So my, I think it's kind of on a similar, it's a similar thing with, um, it's probably less complex, but the similar thing to the massage question where. Um, you might want to have a specialized, if this is, you know, a concern, you might want to have a specialized local licensing process for auto auction. Cuz again, you know, that's a use that generates a lot of traffic and, you know, could, could produce a lot of noise and, you know, other pollution.
Isn't that expressly forbidden in our bylaws? I don't think that's allowed anywhere in our, in our bylaws.
The problem is our bylaws clearly aren't clear about that, and actually, we're trying to.
It's fine, we can define it and exclude it.
Basically, you know.
So if you would just, if you just want to exclude it, I mean.
It's like industrial era, something like that, it might be okay, but.
Is an auto, are you, is an auto auctioneer, do they have the same licensing as an auto dealer? Or is it a separate license?
I think, I think auctioneering is like a distinct profession. Um, because it's sort of, you know, it's, hate to say, it's like, I don't know if it's like gambling, it's like, it's sort of a, it's like this unique sort of profession. Um, so I, I do think it's distinct, cuz you know, it's sort of where you're like verbally selling the, the automobile and. You know, there's like a whole culture around it, so I think it does have its own rules and regulations distinct from a normal dealership.
What happens, Gabe, if some, say Ross Lemansky. Has ten thousand pieces of equipment and decides to sell out.
Has ten thousand pieces of equipment and decides to sell out. And he brings a portable, uh, an auction, which usually happens, the auction comes to you, you don't go to the auction.
Right.
How would that be him?
Would that be a yard sale?
Every days, I mean.
It's like.
No, I know.
My company goes out of business, I've got ten thousand, uh, ten, a hundred pieces of equipment to sell. I'm not gonna go and pick it up or take it to the auction, but some stuff you can't take, but usually.
Right.
Will come to your yard and will hold an auction and they'll sell it off right from your yard.
I mean, uh, it's. Talented, all that picky about it, we're talking about like permanent location.
Some estate sales basically function as auctions. Um, you know, if you, if you, if you're, if you have like, uh, the deceased has some sort of collection of. You know, cars or, you know, some sort of collectible. I mean, you could have an auction, the estate sale could be an auction on site. Um, I don't, I think we're, I mean, I think this definition will basically cover permanent auto auction sites, which do exist. Um, where basically they're storing all these cars. But yeah, I think something like that. You could potentially ask them to go for a town license to make sure that their auctioneer is licensed by the state. Um, but I, I feel like, and that, that, that might be something that happens, it might not be something that happens, I didn't look into that. Um, but. Like, you, you joke, but it probably could qualify as a yard sale, especially if it's on a residential property.
Like in three days, Russ.
This, this situation you're talking about, is this a, Ross, is this like a commercial property?
No, but we had a interest, you know, they have these large auto auction places, the one that. Was in particular here is where it was all cars that were insurance jobs, you know, accidents, floods, whatever. And they have a big facility where they just auction all, you know, tons of cars, you know, and that's. Uh, the type of auto auction that we're thinking of.
Right, right.
Huge car dealers bring them to auction and get rid of them versus putting them on the lot, you know.
Where it's a weekly event.
Yeah.
Wednesday, Connecticut every Thursday.
Yeah. A machine, I mean, I know, we go to auctions all the time and people bring, drive, wants to prevent. Me from buying a piece of, buying a piece of property if it's allowed. And just pile up all this equipment that once a week, or once a month, call an auction here, they come in, an auction of all the equipment.
Yeah, so we might wanna, we might, you could broaden the definition to be the sale of. Like any, basically do like an auction site as a definition. Um, cause if it's automobiles, I mean, like you said, that, that would like exclude, you know, farm equipment or. Whatever from that definition. So we could just broaden the definition. Um, yeah, to cover like any sort of auction, any sort of auction. Um, the only, like, I mean, you could have an op, like, there are like auction houses, you know, like Sotheby's or whatever. That wouldn't, I mean, that, that's not causing the same problems as an auto auction site. Um, it could, we could classify that it has to be, you know, this would be an outdoor auction site. Um, something along those lines and maybe also, you know, maybe. Yeah, I guess maybe also you could sort of pull in that, that, that heavy industrial definition, whereas it, is it causing. You know, because that would be noise pollution if you have a guy outside screaming about cars. Um, you know, you could, you could pull in that, that sort of heavy industrial. How is it affecting the neighbors? Cause I don't think people would care if there was a Sotheby's. You know, location downtown, something like that.
Right, I, I agree, it could be a Sotheby, they could sell a car and antiques and furniture and jewelry. And they, in a permanent place of business. That should be allowed.
So would it be storage and sale of vehicles or automotive? Like that's, but it's, it's not really the selling, but the storing.
It's the.
Yeah, it's that starting to. And the rapid. Volume, primary versus storage and sale of, yeah, of this.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, this is, this is good feedback. I will revisit the, I will take another look at this and talk to my. Talk to my colleague who put this together and just see if there's. You know, any sort of other things we're missing, because I, I think these are all good points and yeah, I think the question is like the outdoor and how it affects the neighbors. And like I said, these like, they could be auctioning cars that aren't even stored there, um, something like that. Um, and also that question of like temporary options, if, if you even want to regulate that. Um, so then finally, um. We, um, we were looking at disposal areas. I pulled a bunch of def, we pulled a bunch of definitions, um, but I was talking to Randy. Um, and I think, you know, the ma, the main concern was like the size of a disposal area. Um, and sort of, and I think that would be something that could be determined through the use table, obviously. But, um, I, I still think it's useful to kind of go through these definitions. Um, so Milbury has a definition for junkyard. Which is the use of any lot outside a building for the storage, keeping or abandonment of junk or scrap. Or discarded materials or the dismantling, demolition or abandonment of automobiles or other vehicles. Or machinery or parts thereof, to include a recycling facility. So that's a, I think that's like a, a good succinct definition. Um, and then Salem has a couple of definitions, they define junk. And then separately define junkyard or automobile graveyard. And then finally, um. New Bedford defines junk, junk motor vehicle and then junkyard or automobile gra- graveyard.
So I like the separate separation of junk and junkyard, um, because junk could be in any material. Cast off. You know, you've got a, a prefab casting business and I just throw all my. Broken parts up in the front yard and leave them there.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if the junk motor vehicle definition is necessarily useful. Um, I think maybe just having a broad definition and you could, you know, obviously say to include. Junk motor vehicle or something if you wanted to, but I don't think having a separate definition is really necessary.
Like having junk and junk, uh, sorry, junk and junkyard is separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, we need junk motor vehicle now.
Okay, so.
Junk motor vehicle might be another one's treasure. Okay.
Okay, so then otherwise, other than that, the sale and the new bed for definitions are identical, so I'll just, I'll go with the Salem. Like I said, the question of the size of disposal areas, I think, if that's a use table. Thing more or less, um, unless you wanted to put, you know, limited to five acres or whatever in the definition.
Once we have it defined, we can, we can further regulate it.
As we do that, then we put it. Make like minimum long side, you know.
But it's not. To be used as readily as what it is. I'm having a problem with English language.
You just described all my gifts.
So, um, is there anything else you guys want to talk about tonight? I will, uh, be in touch with Angela about the zoning. Question on, on the conservation side. Um, but are there any, um, yeah, like, and I, I'll obviously, I'll look at the. Sort of this Airbnb versus B and B question, maybe pull, pull out a food truck definition. Um, you know, kind of try to refine the auction definition. Um, and like an auto auction versus outdoor auction versus temporary auction, something along those lines. Um, yeah, what, what do you guys want me to tackle next in this? After, because that, that, that's not, that, that all is not, I can get that to you, you know, we, you know, by your next meeting or something.
Put an exception in agriculture for the marijuana thing, please.
It's up to us to get this into a use table next, right?
Yeah. Yeah, these definitions.
Okay.
But yeah, next, I mean, the use table will be pretty quick, just that we want to make sure that we're. Use table with the definition. Yeah, right.
Almost there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gabe.
Yeah, no problem, thank you for having me.
For hanging in there.
Yeah, I guess have a, you have other agenda items after me?
No.
So, yeah.
Oh, good. All right, well, I will, uh, keep in touch with Randy, I mean, I'll send him any updated definitions and, uh. Yeah, the, the other thing, um, is just maybe at the next meeting, if, if people have, wanna figure out a strategy for massage parlors.
Open and, yeah, try to find out how they handle it and give back to you what they tell me.
Okay, cool. Great. Well, I'll see you, see you all soon, bye.
Yeah, I'm not really sure if calling up massage parlors separately really makes sense, you know, I think somebody probably put it in there. You know, looking at. What could possibly be there, but they're illegal anyway, so why do you need?
Yeah, that's why you would want to call it out to prevent.
Yeah, yeah, but if it's illegal, it's, it's illegal, there's, you know, right, it, it can't go anywhere either.
It doesn't matter. The police will.
Yeah, right.
All right.
And we, and it, we separated from physical therapy.
Right, that's, that's kind of like done for, you know, I know this, uh, license position and everything now, they're usually doing it. More therapeutic, physically.
But they have to be licensed, that's by the state to do that, so PT and OT. It's, it's a separate state license, massage therapy business is a, is a licensed.
Yeah, so.
Not, then they're breaking laws.
Yeah, exactly.
It's dogged.
Right, right.
Okay, in here we had, in their existing definitions, we had nursing home, nursing and or convalescent homes. And then we had written delete.
I think it's got a good definition.
Oh, okay, delete this and substitute it with the other one.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm thinking of, um. What is it on? Old town.
Yeah, retirement home.
Oh, yeah, back there, it's off a dodge.
Yes, yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
And it, I thought that was.
Yeah, yeah, but you're right, we shouldn't delete that then, because this is really just an adult daycare. So if you want the overnight part and.
We should delete that, but we can bring that up, yeah, when we look at the use table.
Okay, well, only because we have one.
Yeah, so you don't want to make it non-performant.
So keep nursing all over.
All right.
Yeah, the only, before everybody goes, we just gotta sign those bylaws.
Marijuana thing, what's up with green gold paving the park?
He had till, actually, I looked it up, it was September thirtieth.
Okay.
And he said he had told like, hey, you're going to that.
He was supposed to have, uh, John Taylor do it, yeah.
Yeah, he said he was having trouble getting a hold of him or something, like, I don't know, if, if anybody else doesn't have trouble.
Must be Tim's favorite.
What?
No, Johnny does David's driving.
That's real.
Surprisingly.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, but I did look at it, it was till September thirtieth.
Just one, just one question with Klieg's development, is he on the clock, remember the develop?
That was just a preliminary.
He hasn't filed anything yet, he was just kind of get, trying to get a, a yea or nay and current how he felt. Cause we haven't seen him in a while.
Yeah, yeah, the finish is much more complex and much more expensive, so.
Yes.
Maybe he's, I don't know what to do, cause they said they were going to, you know, the, one of the. The lady that worked for him, but I haven't seen him yet, so I don't know.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna make an else motion to adjourn.
So, no, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, can you?